Call or order the Pasco County Board of County Commissions Constitutional Officers Budget Workshop of April 16, 2024. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, merciful Creator, your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we remember in the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Here.
District 3 Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford. District 5 Commissioner Mariano. District 1 Chairman O'Leary.
Here. Thank you, and we have a forum here. Special thanks to the staff for setting up the event. Very nice facility to be used. I was hoping we had one of these on the east side somewhere that we could use, just like we use this one.
We need to get you one.
So I'll have to get enough votes to do that. I believe I can work that out.
Not the votes, but some money.
Hopefully with some money. But at this time, Mr. Carvalho, our county administrator, you can start us off.
Sure. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to say thank you for everyone for attending today. You know, this is, as I mentioned to a lot of you last night when we were talking, this is just an opportunity to provide more transparency through the budgeting process. The board has asked to have more touch points, and this is something, you know, constitutional budgets are part of what the Board of County Commissioners has to make decisions on when it comes to funding. And so the point of today is just to allow an opportunity for us to have a dialogue on your challenges and the things that you're seeing in your various operations, because they provide valuable services to our citizens, and just to help provide a little more transparency and understanding of what those are. This leads us then into a budget workshop with the board in June, as we continue to put together budgets, and I know you continue to put together your budgets as well. So we know this is not a budget review. This is not anything like that. It's more of just a sharing and information exchange here with the board. I know some of you do have other speakers that you may want to present certain aspects of your presentations. We have a couple of chairs over there, so I would just ask that they could come forward and sit there when it's their turn to speak, and, you know, recognize them from there. So with that, Mr. Chair, I think we're good.
Okay. So we're ready. First up is our clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hear me? Okay.
Yes.
For the record, Nikki Albrecht-Solz, Pasco County Clerk and Controller. Thank you, Commissioners, for holding the workshop. I greatly appreciate it to be able to have the dialogue, as Mr. Carvalho said. And I wanted to thank Mr. Carvalho and also Mr. Breitenbach and the team that put this together today, and also recognize my team here to do recorded and make sure that it's covered for the public record. Is the presentation up? I just click the button?
One more.
One more. I'm clicking.
One is working.
Okay. 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 It's fine to cut it. All right. Just a few words. I'm glad, Mr. Carvalho, you mentioned that this is a good dialogue, because that was what we prepared for. I'm not prepared to talk specific numbers, because we're still fine tuning those quotes are still coming in. But I wanted to give you an idea of what to expect to see in the budget. So I greatly appreciate those words. So the first topic, I'll just talk about an overview, and then I'm going to kick it off to my team. But right now, our offices are in settlement negotiations for the multi-agency sieges portion for the declaratory action. And I'm not going to go into detail that other than to say that if we are not able to get to a settlement in time before the May 1 deadline of the budget, that I will be submitting the reimbursement amount for the sieges for fiscal years 2021 and fiscal year 21 to 22. But if we are in the middle of settlement and we've got an agreement going, it's not going to be in the budget. The other items that we're going to talk about, I'm going to have my team present those to you. One is the increased cost for goods and services. So probably the similar things that you are seeing in your office for increases are the typical increases that we are seeing. There's an issue with inflation for the cost of goods and services, and also we're trying to focus on information technology, security, because there are concerns of local government getting tapped by tappers, I guess is a great word to say it. And next, we're going to also talk about personnel cost increases. You know, we were told a 5% increase with the county, so we'll put that in there. There's also increases to FRS and salaries. So to kick it off, I have to talk about the cost for goods and services and IT. That is Tim Jameson, my Director of Information Technology. Following him will be Heather Grimes, my Chief Administrative Officer, to talk more about personnel costs in the records area of the Office of Board Records. And then finally, will be Matt Lazar. He's my chief, he's my, I'm sorry, my information. He is the Director of our Finance Department, and he is also going to talk to you about some personnel cost inflations. All right. So I've got the controller in the clicker. Just let me know if I need to go forward.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tim Jameson, Information Technology Director, Clerk and Clerk. So.
Is your mic working?
Here's the on.
Yes, it's working.
Okay. So, you know, one of our big challenges is, you know, over the prior years during the early part of the pandemic, we had a lot of discounts and stable prices, but unfortunately that is not held true over the last couple of years. So we are experiencing price increases and, and at the same time, we're experiencing need increases, especially in the cybersecurity realm. I'm sure you've all heard of the issues in Hernando and Leon and St. John's, and it's just seemed like it's endless in the newspapers. So we are, you know, increasing our capabilities. We're increasing the amount of assistance we receive for those things. So for over the past two years, the increase in cost for cybersecurity is up about 96%. So the good news has been, last year at least, we had the state local government cybersecurity grant. We were able to get some assistance for that. We've applied for that again this year. However, their process is not that it's the ongoing forever thing. Their concept is it's a bootstrap to get local governments quickly up to where they need to be, and then they're expecting us to gradually assume that full cost. So in the application this year, one of the things they were asking for is, okay, in calendar year '25, what kind of matching funds can you give us? And that's part of the scoring mechanism to make sure that recipients are on board with, okay, we're going to up our cybersecurity level, and then we're going to maintain it eventually through local funding. So that's an important aspect for us. And then you just look at the labor costs that go with that. Security's part of almost every technical position now, and every project, every workflow has security concerns. So just the increase in labor in general to get those things done. So that's one big focus. The other one is, of course, the inflation I mentioned. So for instance, it's kind of partially inflation and kind of partially improved capabilities. But on our Microsoft Enterprise contract, like the county now, all of our team is on Office 365, which means that we have the ability to operate in the cloud, which gives us more resiliency and redundancy should things go amiss locally. And those things now cost more money. So for instance, just the Office 365 component from 2021, when the last contract was signed in 2024, February, when we just signed the current one, it's a 167% increase for the Microsoft Office cost. And so that was a big jump for us. Also, just general maintenance costs, we're seeing increases where we didn't see them before. Vendors feel free to go ahead and pass those costs on, knowing that it's an inflationary environment. So factoring in the increases that we've already seen over the past couple of years and then projecting next year, we're looking at, you know, a 19% increase in maintenance costs and contract services. Same thing with the capital expenditures. As we replace aging equipment, those are up about 15%. And then, of course, we still have the obligation to make things better for the public. For instance, we're streamlining our jury check-in using automation, streamlining the payment process so that they receive their jury payments. Also, the juror system itself has an upgrade that's due, driven primarily by DHS and V's plans to change the driver's license number structure. So we want to be compliant with that. What we do not want is to have two different versions of the driver's license in the system and have, you know, the public receiving multiple jury summons, one for each version of their license that would not reflect well on our system. And finally, we're talking about also making compliance more efficient and more proactive for our customers. So for instance, having mobile payment options, having auto reminders of text messages that you have a payment that's due, so they can make compliance with payment plans, because that compliance is important, because it helps them maintain their driving privileges and not end up with a suspended license. So those are just some of our big themes for this coming year. Any questions?
Just a generally, see, you know, percentages can look pretty bloody. I prefer to see whole numbers. I think that puts the dollar value in real perspective, because percentages can be good and bad, but 167%, what's that truly equate to, right? So.
Sure, I can give you.
Just with how, I think this is generally across our budget and transparent with our staff and what's the percentage really. So just a general comment to conclude your presentation.
Commissioner Waitman, one of the things that I mentioned in the beginning is I'm not ready to talk specific numbers. We're still fine tuning numbers, but wanted to kind of give you an idea of where we are, what's happening. But you write 167% on $1,000, isn't as much as 167% on $1 million, right? But just, so the theme is there's going to be increases, and these are technology increases that you're also going to be seeing and being presented by your staff as well. But I hear you. I completely understand. We will have those numbers in our budget on May 1. If you have questions after that, I'm happy to meet with you, with my team, or I'm happy to meet with your team, you know, whatever it is that you would like to know about those numbers.
Thank you. And enough, I guess this would be here, Brian Bach, question statement. Does each constitutional office have their own IT security vendor? Or is it one procurement countywide?
Separate, sir. They're separate, sir.
They're separate?
Yes, sir.
Would it be more economical for the taxpayer to have one security platform across the entire county versus others? No?
I don't think you have, I apologize.
No, you're fine.
Turn the microphone.
I wish I did.
I'm just making sure the record is kept.
Mr. Sana?
I can't speak for the other constitutional. You couldn't do that at the tax collector's office, because we're, we have a system that through the Department of Motor Vehicle, and they would totally object for us to be, to share that information with anyone else. You know, so we wouldn't be able to do so. Great idea.
I could add, at a state level, we're somewhat accomplishing that. One of the things that the grant is hopeful to do is as that, as we assume local funding, we hope to assume it at the heavily discounted state contract price that they've negotiated for this. What they're telling us is that they're giving basically a 10 to 1 discount on it. So, and I'm pretty sure that the county has also received some grant funding in that manner.
Let's hope so. That sounds like a pretty good coupon to me. So, thank you.
Mr. Mariano?
So looking at what that 96% increase would be, I think is important, and I think the 167 as well. Are there any other alternatives out there where you can look for cost reductions? That would go for us as well later, but.
Yeah, I mean.
I guess if there's any other grants available, or even another vendor, yeah.
I am curious, did we also then see a 96% increase? Because why, because if they did, then we probably did too.
Yeah, it's my understanding that we're tracking.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and then the 96% increase for cybersecurity isn't price increases alone, but they're added capabilities over the prior two years. So when you're talking about things like, you know, endpoint detection and recovery, and then you have network detection and recovery, and then you have collecting the data that's coming in at the border, whether it's the email or this firewall. So there's different systems that are dedicated to doing that. And then the state grant has also helped us, and I believe that it's helped the county as well, to pull that data together into a single source that's monitored 2%.
So in that cost, you have added services coming at the same time?
Yeah, that was not, that was not 100% inflationary. It was added services.
So back to, as far as, let's say, Microsoft and the 167. You get in the cloud, they raise up the price once you're in there. Is there another alternative that's out there?
Yeah, what we used to do is we used to use the perpetual license that was on the front. Boyd didn't have any cloud services. And what would happen is about every four years, you would spend about $150,000. And then you would maybe, if times were really tight, you might try to stretch that until you're like, now you're behind a version or two, and now the security patches aren't flowing. And so that stuff, yes, there was ways to save money on that before. It's probably a little more expensive to be in the cloud versions, but you stay up to date and you have a lot more capability. In the long run, you spend almost as much.
Mr. Carvalho? I was going to add something, something similar to that. IT departments constantly look at kind of offloading old products and adding new products and renewals. And that's, you know, you can take one thing off the books, but you end up having to add other things. So they really work very hard to try to balance that out and taking advantage of the grants. I know that's something that we've done at the county as well, to leverage cybersecurity to make our system even safer and more resilient. So I'm validating what you're saying here.
You have a question?
Well, I understand maybe how it's harder to share the same cybersecurity contract, but couldn't we all share the same Microsoft contract? And is there savings, and maybe we're talking peanuts here, but is there savings if we had one contract for all the constitutionals in Pasco? Because Microsoft, 365 is Microsoft 365 for all of us.
I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure that the Microsoft Enterprise agreement that we have is from the state level, right?
Okay, so the state gets a discount for all of us?
We're all achieving savings.
Yeah.
Okay, now we need a US one.
We checked for another level. Okay. All right.
Let's see what else.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Next up is Heather Grimes, my Chief Administrative Officer. And one thing I forgot to mention when I was introing was that I had already scheduled an appointment at 11:00 AM before this one was scheduled, and that's why I asked to go first, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to do that. So I'm going to head out a little after 10:00, but my team will still be here if you have questions for my office. So thank you. Ms. Grimes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm going to talk to you about a position that you'll see in the budget. We're going to add, it's an internal position, Board Records Clerk and our Board Records Team. So Shannon is one of those members. And so you see them very visibly at board meetings, committee meetings, board workshops. There's another component that you probably don't see as much. They also are the clerk to the Value Adjustment Board, so that's where citizens can contest their property values. And in both cases, so board meetings held in a number of hours, and when we say board meetings, that's also committee meetings. The number of hours held is increasing. We've seen that. But even more in Value Adjustment Board, the number of petitions have just skyrocketed. So we've seen a 69% increase in VAB petitions since 2019, and since 2013, that increase is 357%. So not all petitions make it 100% through the process. Part of the process is there's a hearing that's held with a special magistrate, and our team has to schedule all those, clerk those. And we work in conjunction with the Property Appraisers Office. But about, you have to restart the process with the scheduling, and about on average, 50% of those make it to an actual hearing where the special magistrate, you know, hears what they have to say. So it has caused a huge increase in work for this very small team. So we used to have six people plus, six teammates plus the supervisor, but in 2009, when everyone was having to cut, we cut the position. And it is time to add back the sixth person to be able to keep up with the workload. You know, things are, they often have to decide, especially during the VAB time, you know, do they, who are they sending to a meeting, or, you know, someone's out sick, they're struggling to get things done. So we will be adding a position in the budget. I do think it's important to note, though, to this board, because I think there's a legislative change that's potentially needed. So there is a filing fee for VAB petitions, and that fee was set in 1983 for $15. And nothing that costs $15 in 1983 still costs $15, you know. And so it doesn't cover the cost. I think we only collected about $21,000 this last year. And if it was increased, it wouldn't cover the cost of this position. So I think that that's probably important to note for the board, too. But that's really all about I have, unless you have any questions.
One question? All right. We're good. Thank you.
Oh, I had a question.
Now's the question.
How many total employees do you guys have?
In the clerk's office?
Yeah.
We have about 320 positions. Currently, you stand about 300.
And you're only, you're adding one new position for next year?
One for Board Records. Matt's going to tell you about one for Finance, but two total.
Those are additional, additional employees, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then coming up is Matt Lazar, the Director of our Finance Department.
Good morning. This is going to be very strange for me, because I am the finance director, and I was told not to talk about numbers. So I'll do my best.
Well, we probably won't have any questions.
I'm sure I'll, so I do have some numbers that you're going to see on the slides, and I don't think anything up there is going to be new to any of you. You're seeing since 2019, you're seeing an increase in leveraging debt to meet the capital needs of the citizens of Pasco County. And what we're looking to add, specifically the Treasury Management Capital Asset Division, is a operations lead. And the goal of that position is to manage the expectations of not only the citizens and the county, but the clerk's office. And that is to be that troubleshoot, that frontline subject matter expert to work with the day-to-day operational individuals, as well as the high-end decision makers yourself, the clerk, the finance team. Because while we are all involved in reinvesting funds or managing debt, we do need those experts to be that go-between to help us develop those procedures, implement those procedures, and really improve them, and really have those trainings that are going to go along with those procedures and development. The key things we're seeing is as we continue to acquire debt, that is something that is also occurring across the nation. A lot of local governments are doing that. Outside parties are taking a very close look at that from different auditing standards. So in the past three years, we've seen four different pronouncements from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and they have, three of those have been focused on long-term debt acquisitions and reporting and the financial transparency that comes with those. It's not an easy process. It could take years to implement. Some of them, they're two years out. But then there's a process improvement. It takes a couple of years to perfect that. And that isn't just the finance taking the lead. We may help with the implementation, but then county departments need that guidance from the clerk's office to continue, whether it's the financial transaction component or simply just how they're going to report it to bondholders when they have questions. So the goal of this position, they're not going to be the ultimate decision authority, but they're going to be involved in reviewing the documentation that comes across and helping the leadership team and the day-to-day team make the necessary improvements, make sure those processes are completed timely, accurately, and ultimately have our, the end game in financial services. We'll just have for the September 30 financial reporting period, not have findings or any issues, and continue to be both bondholders, the citizens, and yourselves. That is all I have before I do start talking numbers. So that is it for me.
Any questions about anything but numbers?
Nothing numerical, Chair.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. You know, the county is growing, and you can tell the volume is growing in your office and in mine as well. And, you know, the cost for goods and services with inflation, we are seeking, we will be seeking to add the two positions, you know, the added costs for May 1 budget.
A question, Nikki. Some of the percentages we were getting were from like 2019. What's the percentages look like for within this year? I mean, from '24 to '25, so.
So the slide with IT was year-over-year, those percentages. So the 96% is what's up in over the prior two years, and then there's the year-over-year for the maintenance and the capital. And then the contract of Microsoft is a multi-year contract, so it's up for renewal. And I don't know exactly how many years that is, but it's up for renewal. So that is the cost of the increase for the renewal.
Oh, from, so that contract started a few years back?
It did.
Oh, okay. Right.
We use the, I'm sure, we did have, we were on the state contract for the Microsoft Office 365, and now there's a big increase. I think that the time that it was entered into, we'll have to look at into it, was the time when COVID hit and there was big reductions in costs for that to help local governments get back on their feet. And now we're seeing that go away with the renewal contract.
I think we find that in a lot of different areas, that we've had contracts in place for two or three years, and now they're fixing to renew, and that renewal has escalated quite a bit from the time we did it before. So, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Your Honor?
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Well, I join our clerk, Nikki, in thanking you all for inviting me to be here and inviting me to have this opportunity to present to you what I believe is probably one of the most significant things to Pasco County needs in the upcoming kind of centuries, if you will. The, what we have here, thank you, we have the growth in Pasco County. And if you notice here, and this is kind of the low-hanging fruit, I know you know a lot of this, but nonetheless, I thought it was important to emphasize this, because as the county grows, so does the reliance upon our court system. Remember, our court system deals with everything from criminal justice to probate to family law issues to guardianship issues. I mean, I could keep going on and on, but we handle a myriad of offenses, you know, a myriad of issues, civil cases. We want to attract businesses into our community. Businesses need to have access to the courts, and that is an important part of making Pasco, and keeping Pasco a premier county, as we all wish to do. And I guess this is probably not one good time, as any, to emphasize to you all, although I am the Chief Judge in Pinellas of Pasco County, I grew up in Pasco County, I'm a graduate of Gobi, so I sit here as someone who's been here quite some time. Well, it's just weird to share in with Brian. It's changed a little bit since I got here in the early '70s, as you might imagine. So I am certainly. So I am certainly Pasco County in my roots. And the first Pasco County judge to be elected chief judge, which I think says a lot about how Pasco County is viewed within the court system and within our circuit. As you can see, we are the third fastest-growing county in the country, according to this Tino the News Journal source in USA Today, in which they cite our census. I know this is all, you're just, thank you. I've got the best, quicker person going here than any man in the county. Like I said, I know this is kind of the low-hanging fruit, but you all, you all know everything that you've been approving, all the people that have been moving in. I mean, just go south of the courthouse and the court complex on Little Road, and you all have approved 3,400 houses just in that area alone. We have this incredible growth, and I think it says a lot about our community, and it says a lot about our board of county commissioners. And once again, I want to thank Mike Graballo and his staff for working with us on the courthouse issues as well. They've been fabulous to work with. We have, once again, this growth is just, if you go to the next one even, yep, you already have, you know, you can see the number, and you all know this, like I said, this is kind of the easy stuff. But with all this, with these people, come issues, come issues in which the court, in which a courthouse is necessary and which is an integral part of the infrastructure, really, of Pasco County and to maintain it as a premier community.
Judge, can you wait one second?
Sure.
And some of us can't read that at all.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if it's my contacts are not right.
I'll switch seats now.
No, I don't, even sitting here, I should read it. So can we, is this?
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Oakley. I appreciate it. As I said, when we start this, when we start this process out, and Shannon, tell me if I'm doing okay? Okay, thank you. As we start this process, when we start talking about this central court complex, we just talked about the growth of Pasco. And I know this is kind of the easy part of this, the low-hanging fruit. Well, we really anticipate, and you all know the growth of our county, as the one slide indicated, early on, third fastest-growing county in the state of Florida, or in the country, I'm sorry, according to the census. Now, so what happened was way back in the early, I mean, this started back in the '80s, '90s with John Gallagher, Dan Johnson, the prior administrator for Pasco County. They purchased land out in Land O' Lakes, out on 41, for a jail and for a courthouse. And because of that, they got, they started going, they put together a committee, a committee of all the stakeholders, and you'll see them on the next slide, but of all the stakeholders, and said, you know, we need to get together, we need, we know Pasco's going to grow, we know we need a centralized courthouse. At one point in time, the then sheriff, Bob White, said, you know, the people of Pasco are going to demand a centralized kind of court facility during one of the meetings. And, because I, believe me, I've read through 23 years of notes, meetings, minutes, and everything else. And if we go to the next slide, you can see, these are the folks who are on it. You can see the court, the state attorney's office, the clerk, I mean, the sheriff, Ann Hildebrand, person near and dear to my heart, at that time, the Pasco County chairman, the Pasco County board of county commissioners. And as you can see, it was well-represented. This committee gets together and decides, yes, we need to really start working on having this central courthouse built. Everyone's in agreement that it needs to be done way back then, early, even into the early 2000s. And so what happens is they start working on, trying to decide how to fund this courthouse, because, you know, this is, this is going to be a fairly significant capital improvement project. So they're talking about, they recognize the need and support, and the courts are always been willing to work with the county in any way we can to try to secure this courthouse for the future growth of Pasco County. Once, we got to the point in 2010, and some of you may recall this, that we got green-lighted for the project, that we, they were going to, we were going to hire the architectural firm and started receiving proposals to build the courthouse on that campus. And we have a spot marked on the campus, we're ready to go. Like you said, we've been very grateful working with Mike and his team as far as, you know, knowing where this courthouse would need to be put on that property. At one point in time, the courthouse was going to be joined with the jail, and it was going to be a single project. If we go to the next slide. We then hired Hery International, the county, board of county commissioners selects Hery International for the design and build. We contract with them, that is the contract, the MAX 7172900. And after a great deal of work for that basically two-year period of time, they presented the design package with, and were kind of ready to go on that. So then what happens is after that, the jail, and it's determined that the jail and the courthouse, because of the campus and apparently a number of other issues, cannot be connected. So the jail, the courthouse becomes removed from the jail, and the jail is a standalone issue, as you all know, and the jail is being constructed. Pasco County contracts with CGL about in 2014, so we moved from 2012 to 2014, and say, okay, what is our master plan going to look like? What are we going to build out? And basically, at that point in time, the folks you contracted with says, well, the jail and the courthouse, the central courthouse, are the two top capital improvement projects. They are, they are A priorities. They are, they are the two top priorities within Pasco County that needs to, that will satisfy the needs of our constituents, of our citizens, for the one-to-five-year build-out plan. There's an RFI issued by Pasco toward the central courthouse. And the language you see there is really from the county RFI that talks about the main workload indicator for judicial departments is population growth. We have that. Court filings, you'll see those are up. Crime, well, I don't need to say anything more about that, and juvenile referrals. And it talks about both juvenile, I'm sorry, both judicial center buildings are in overall good physical conditions, but are stressed. And that is the present courthouse in Dade City and the present courthouse in New Porriti. They are stressed, so it makes sense to build that central complex to take the stress off those two. Later on, you'll see if we're able to do that, we're able to extend the life of those two side courthouses, the one in Dade City and New Porriti, by 20 years. And that will accept the anticipated growth for probably, as indicated by, through these studies, for about the next 20 years. So what really helps us a great deal in the life expectancy of the East and West Pasco courthouse. And I think it's important to note, even today, the East Pasco courthouse, because of the lack of security and a lack of number of other issues, would not even qualify as a criminal courthouse. Because, because the security issues, because when it was initially built, kind of way back when, you know, that wasn't necessarily a primary concern, but certainly it is. And I think the sheriff's office deals on the security issues and will be coming before the board of county commissioners with regard to some of those concerns they have within those courthouses, but most specifically East Pasco. Once again, the most recent study, once again, the CGL determined that a centrally-located criminal justice center is really the most efficient use to extend the life of the two East Pasco, West Pasco courthouses, the one in New Porriti and Dade City, and also to centralize the work that can be done at the criminal courts complex. And we really need to just look south, because in Pinellas, they did exactly the same thing. And it really has been a very efficient way to serve the community there. And I'll get to more of that in a little bit. But it, so throughout time, pretty much, this committee has determined, and even the people that you all have hired to do your studies for your management and your population growth and your projections, have all pretty much said that this courthouse is a need. We go from 2016, where they actually rate priorities, A priority, once again, I mentioned that earlier, the '22 update says, yes, it's number four on the list of, and I don't know if they kind of prioritize it, but it's certainly number four on the six-to-10-year plan. It is number four on that list for the needs for the citizens of Pasco County, as you can see. So even, like I said, the consultants that the county is relying upon recognize the importance of this kind of centralized courthouse. And I just threw in the little thing at the bottom, because as we all know, if anybody tries, ever tried to park at the West Pasco courthouse, the parking's a mess when they opened it up for the first time. So it's really tough to even say that we can even build on to that, to that, for instance, the, because, because of the limitation of space and that sort of thing. And when the, when CGL and the other companies did the analysis, they looked at the, they looked at the possibility of building on to the two side ones and determined that really wasn't a viable, that wasn't really the best option to serve our community. And because of the growth and the manner of the growth, the courthouses themselves, that it was really far more efficient to serve our community to have a centralized courthouse. And a lot of communities are going to that. If we go to the next one, and I want to thank, we have here our public defender, Sarah Malo, I cannot thank her enough. We have a representative of the state attorney's office as well, Adam Ross, Bruce Bartlett wanted to be here but had a prior commitment. And if you have any questions for them, they will tell you that the economy for them to, economy of scale and efficiency, to better assist the citizens of Pasco County would be greatly enhanced by being able to consolidate their two, their two offices from Dade City and New Porriti into a centralized complex. And I don't want to speak too much to them, but I feel very comfortable and confident that they are, that they are in agreement with that. And like I said, I think they'd certainly answer any, any conversation you may have with that, or any questions you may have with regard to that. And once again, it extends by the county's own metrics, it extends the life of the two side courthouses, because they're less stressed. So really, we get, we get, we get better usage out of the, out of the New Porriti and Dade City courthouse for civil matters, and then we, and then we consolidate into, into the central facility. If you look at this, this is, this is what we should have by the matrix, like I said, of counties of our size, courthouses, and these are the numbers that we get candidly from the county and from, from the studies done by CGL and some of the other updates for our master plan. We are already 228,000 square feet under what the court's system should have. We're already down 228,000. It's really right now, that was 2022, now I think it's like 236-ish. You can see in 2026, we'll be under 253,000 square feet, what we need, and it obviously just goes up as the county grows. So we're already, these are, and they're in red on these graph for a reason. This is all what we would be in deficit of, of what we would need to better serve and to really serve at a minimal the folks of our community. So, I mean, as you can see, we're already kind of in the hole starting out. So certainly that courthouse would be a big, big help. If you look at this, this is our ratio of judges to courtrooms as we, as we compared to the rest of the state of Florida. The Sixth Circuit, we have 22 judges in Pasco County, we have 13.5 courtrooms. You'll see on this, many other circuits within the state are one-to-one, one judge, the one courtroom, or maybe even greater than that, more courtrooms than they have judges. And Pasco, obviously, we have a significant deficit of, once again, 22 judges, 13.5 courtrooms. And you can imagine, that affects scheduling, it affects the ability, when you're doing a, for instance, a family law case that has some contentiousness to it, you know, here you are trying to do it in chambers, people are sitting three feet across from each other, it's an ugly situation, it can get very ugly, you know, so there's certainly advantages and meaningful, and it really makes the process much more meaningful and important when you do it in a courtroom as compared to just trying to do it in chambers. So once again, our ratio, as you can see, is much different than many of the other, we've kind of grabbed these numbers from other jurisdictions, and this is kind of what they're telling us, is that our, our numbers are certainly not comparable to the other ones. If you look in the, in the next, in the Sumner Building Judicial Center over in Dade City, the Sumner courthouse, four and a half courtrooms, nine judges. And just trying to juggle courtrooms and juggle hearings and everything, that just try to schedule all these things, can really become a very difficult task. I mean, because you need these courtrooms to conduct court, yet, you know, we just don't have the space, we don't, and kind of an interesting anecdotal story that I was talking to Judge Public about, he came out of his chambers, turned the corner the other day, and came face-to-face with somebody that's on trial for murder. Because that's just the way the courthouse is set up, as he tried to get to his courtroom. So, you know, sometimes those things could potentially be very ugly, and those are some of the security concerns I previously mentioned. New Porriti, nine courtrooms, 13 judges, same issues. We do our best to try to juggle those courtrooms, we've built out as much as we can within that. I can tell you, my office, for instance, in New Porriti, was, was just a regular staff, staff office. I can tell you that one of our judges was in a prior server room for the computers. My office is sometimes referred to as the broom closet. And I feel fine with that, but my point is, we've kind of built out as much as we can, we've done the same and tried to be very efficient, you know, stewards of the funds of the county, and done our best to try to build out and be really fiscally responsible, you know, within the each court, each courtroom and each courthouse on both sides of the county. If we go to the next one, you can see our filings up. I mean, this is a theme we've heard from everybody, that the county is growing, there's more pressure on the, there's more pressure on the clerk's office, because they're hearing more and more and more, more and more filings, cases coming through their office. Well, those cases have to go somewhere. We built, we built a new jail because we needed that, because the growth in the county, well, pretty much everyone who's in that jail has to come through the court system. So, you know, we build, we build a jail to house more because we need more, but then we need to also understand that there's a trickle effect to that, that literally every single one of those people in some way, shape, or form comes through the court system. So, so we need to recognize, yeah, our filings are going up, they're going to continue to go up as, as our, as our population continues to grow. Benefits of Pasco County, it's really just going to be a good convenience for our citizens to be able to split the way we've talked about. Transportation, right now, they have to drive from the jail to both sides of the county in vans, and sometimes it'll be nine and 10, and vans full of inmates being transported all over the county. Well, I don't have to tell you the liability that suggests you all to. All it's going to take is one, one van to get in an accident, and all of a sudden, the county's going to be subject to 12 different suits. You know, so, or 15, or however many people they put in those vans. Long-term, it's, once again, long-term cost-saving for the county. And we talked about, as the county grows, as the caseload grows, as the, as the number of judges grows, the anticipated, in 2035, in one of the studies that was done by your consultants, it was anticipated that we would have to have 31 judges up here just to handle the increased workload, as opposed to the 22 that we have now. So, and also, we talked about security. So, I mean, these are, obviously, and the security is to keep our citizens who use the courthouse safe, our jurors who come in to use the courthouse safe, the staff, the judiciary, the bailiffs, to keep everybody in a much safer situation than we really have now. So we keep kind of putting Band-Aids on that, trying to do our best to maintain that safety, to maintain our citizens' safety. But at some point in time, you know, the growth is going to just overwhelm us. I would also point out, Commissioner Oakley, if you want to, hopefully, if we build this, if you want a nice room to have another hearing near the east side, you know, I'm volunteering the courthouse for that right now, so we can go ahead and have that. I'll volunteer right up front. And, but once again, and I would, like I said, we have the good fortune to have both our, our public defender here and the representative of the state attorney's office, and they've been gracious not to answer any questions or how this would affect them in a positive way. This, everybody, everybody sitting here is going to talk about the growth of our county, how that impacts our county, how that, and the difference in the importance that is to being a premier community. I will share with you that I'm in the process of talking with the folks in Pinellas, because they're moving, a bunch of their government, they're consolidating, once again, consolidating some of their, their constitutionals into another area of Pinellas County. That would include the courthouse. So they're going to be building a courthouse down there as well, and they're going into some of the same funding issues that you all are going to be addressing with regard to this. So I suggested, and I, and I talked to Mr. Brian Back and Mr. Graballo about, you know, maybe talk to them to see how they're going to do it, because they've already, they've already committed to that, and they already know that there's going to be some debt incurred as a result of that. The reports are, the media reports on that are that their, their campus is going to be anywhere from 280 to 330 million dollars for them to consolidate and build a new courthouse and build a new, have a place for the tax collector and the clerk and property appraiser and all the other functions down there. County administration, you know, permits and all that sort of thing, down there in one spot on 22 acres off Homerton Road. So, so they're going to be going through a lot of this. So, uh, so they're going to be going through a lot of the same kind of issue as you are as far as financing and that sort of thing. And, you know, uh, it's, uh, I'm kind of available for any kind of questions you may have. I think it's interesting to note, as we sit here, I believe, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the campus of the school that, that a school was approved, the school was built, and by the time the school was finished being built, now there's going to have to be a $10 million wing built on it because the growth has already surpassed what you, what was anticipated. So, I mean, and, and so even if we put a shovel in the ground today, this wouldn't be built for a while and there's still going to be incredible growth of Pasco. And it says a lot about you all, it says a lot about Pasco County, it says a lot about the, the government, how we work here, because if, if, if that wasn't true, people wouldn't want to move here. And people wouldn't want to live here, and people wouldn't want to make this their, their, their kind of forever home. And clearly, we're the third fastest growing county, so I think it says a lot about the county and how, how it's administered, uh, but it also, you know, it's, you take the good with the bad. We're doing really well, so more people want to move in, but by virtue of more people wanting moving in, it causes us to have more issues and, and have to keep up with that growth. And that's literally, I think, probably for everybody sitting here at this table. Um, are there any, uh, any questions I can answer?
Your Honor, I'd just like to thank you for bringing that forward. We've talked, I've been a county commissioner out in my eighth year, and for this period in time, we've talked about this courthouse many times. Uh, I don't think we've ever come up with how to pay for it, but that is an issue we're going to actually look at. We looked at detention, I mean, detention had been deferred for years and years, and finally we put out a bond issue and got money. Well, we hope to be an addition of 1,000 beds, and we only, because of inflation and all the other costs coming, because of all the growth, we were only providing about somewhere between 550 and 600 beds with that same money. So, I mean, inflation all hit, and it really caused to do a lot of things. And this courthouse is going to cost more than it would have if we had built it 10 years ago.
Sure, oh sure.
So it just continues to grow. Uh, our population, I know, is somewhere in 700,000 now. We're moving toward a million people, and, and the more we move, the more people that come in that want to live here, want to have, want people that have here for many, many years, and they're going to come.
Yeah.
And I mean, we've got to figure out a way to be able to afford to do this and actually to, because a certain percentage of those people that move in are going to have a problem.
Mm-hmm.
And it causes a problem, and it causes problems, it's a ripple effect. Uh, the more you have come in, the more problems you'll have for the judicial system, the sheriffs are going to have more issues coming, and the clerk's got more people to, to deal with, and just on and on. When I first got elected, we had, all the parks were, had deferred maintenance for 20 years. But I mean, that's because it wasn't taken care of for the 20 years prior to us getting here.
Right.
But then we presented that, and citizens of Pasco County actually voted for those bond issues to take care of a lot of these issues, to bring them up, up to stuff. But even that, our parks were behind, our parks were growing like crazy because of all the people that were coming. And we still have more and more costs to our park systems and our sheriffs having the same issues, I know, and judicial systems having an issue. But we can't keep kicking that can down the road for these items not to be taken care of because we need these items to come forward. Now, it's easy to say that, but it's very hard to get that money to be able to attack that. We need to be looking at that and do that.
And, and as I said, I've had conversations with, with your, our neighbors to the south, and they're like, well, this is the first time we're going to go into debt because we're going to have to build these things.
Yeah.
And then, so the, they're, they're kind of recognizing exactly what you pointed out, Commissioner, that this needs to be done, regardless of how we, you know, we can't just keep ignoring it. So there, so, uh, and I really appreciate your, your words because I, I think you've really nailed it. Yeah, I mean, it's a great place to live, but with that comes certain responsibilities. And, and, and the responsibilities also fall upon us as the court system as well to try to do our very best to manage that. And, uh, and we're going to continue to do so. We want to be good partners with you all, we want to work hard with you all and, and do our very best to, to, you know, uh, uh, have a county commission that is bold enough and has the courage enough to want to put their names on the side of a building like this that's going to serve the community for decades to come. That is, that's going to be a great thing, and that's, I think, something that, that is kind of long overdue.
We're, we're really fortunate here in Pasco County. We probably have the greatest citizens that'll step forward knowing it's going to cost them money, but they're willing to step forward and vote for those bond issues, those things that puts us forward, knowing they're going to be paying that back. Our citizens, we've done that before, and I'm sure they're there to do it again, because we, I think we have the best citizens in, in all of Florida.
Well, I'm a little biased too, so I still live here and everything, so I understand what you're saying.
That's right.
Mr. Waite?
Thank you, Chair. Something to think about at a later discussion for a later day, maybe have Chief Judge and his team come, as they go through our, let, a call of history lesson from our legislative ask, if we narrow this to a big ticket item, and maybe we come to a consensus that we, we add it, add it to the list, that way it's not such a big, big bite for us here locally. Um, which is something I think it might be worth discussing at a legislative delegation meetings and as we move forward, and if there's consensus, it might be, might be a fun conversation to have.
And we're willing to work with you in any way we can, I, and I think, I think, uh, I think Mike Cabalo agree, we, you know, I, we've always been open to try to work with you all the best we can and to be, and also candidly be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. I mean, I think that's another important part of this, to be fiscally responsible.
Did you?
No.
A couple, a couple of questions. I, I have many friends who are attorneys, and I have close friends who are going through important issues, and they're all online. So how is that, is, is the online Zoom court hearings helping you deal with your problem? And do you see that as, with technology helping you to deal with this front?
Yeah, that's a great question. We, we've kind of had to do, had to do some of that. We had to do some of that during COVID, and now just because of space, we, we kind of have to do that. The difficulty is, I have lawyers coming to me now saying, look, we're not accomplishing what we normally would accomplish. When you come to court, you know, the lawyers are there, they talk together, they're not sitting in their spare bedroom, you know, somewhere else in Orlando or whatever, trying to do these things. Where they come together, the judge can, you know, talk to them, go out in the hall, talk about this resolving. So I have judge, lawyers come to me going, look, we got to stop doing as much as this. But I say, we can't, because we have, like you say, you, great point, we, you know, we don't have enough courtrooms, we literally cannot do this, so we're doing some things by Zoom. And if you think about it, it just makes sense. If you're just sitting there, you know, and they say, well, can we resolve this case? And you're sitting there in your living room and somebody's sitting off there next to you, you know, coaching you or doing whatever, we can't see them on camera.
Yeah.
So we're, so these cases are even taking longer, like, it's like domestic violence cases, you know, the new boyfriend or girlfriend sitting over there. You know, we can't see that, and so we're not resolving the cases like we, like we could. Um, and so, you know, there, there's really something to be said for, for coming to court, you know, getting cases, moving through the system, resolving them in an appropriate manner. That's, that, that may not be satisfactory to everybody, but, you know, many times, you know, as I used to tell people when I did family, you're not going to get everything you want, it's just not going to happen, but we can at least try to reach a resolution that people can look at.
Two more questions, um, don't get mad at me. My buddy over here. But, um, I remember when we had a facilities update, because I think we just did a facilities master plan. Um, it showed that the clerk had a surplus of place, I'm not saying the judges in the courts, I'm saying the clerk. So.
Had a surplus of that?
Of square footage. And it was fairly significant. So, um, I wonder if there's some opportunities there.
Well, we've already, in, in, uh, we've already, I don't know, I want to, don't want to say taken, we've already had the opportunity to work with the clerk in Dade City, and we actually, that's where the half courtroom came in. We took the law library there and we were able to make a, a small courtroom that we can use for like injunctions and things like that. And, and like I said, some of these things, like I said, perfect example of things that need to be done in court, like domestic violence injunctions, stalking injunctions, you know, dating violence, all these things should be done in court because, you know, we need to make sure that we impress upon the, the person not to have any further contact, if that's what's appropriate. And, uh, the clerk's office, we were not able to really work with them as good partners, and we, we built that other little courtroom out, and that really helped us quite a bit in Dade City. I mean, it's still four and a half, but that half helps us, you know, every little bit helps.
And my last question, and, and I hope it's a quick answer, because I know we have a lot to do. Are there, do you, are you aware if there are grants available either for federal or state to help build these courts?
We've been kind of looking into that, the best we can, uh, there's some difficulty with that, but I like the idea of maybe trying to work with the legislature a little bit and trying to get some additional funding there. Um, I, I like that idea. Um, like I said, I'm, uh, we're, we're, we're open to working in any way we can. We have not found any grants truly, uh, that would fit that bill. A, a good example is, just this year, they funded the, um, uh, the courthouse, the Bernie McCabe Second District of Appeals Fund for the, it was on the docket, it was on for three years, and they finally funded it this year, and that was, uh, so it took kind of some time to get that done, but the legislature did kick in the money for that, and as far as I know, that has not been beat up at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Your Honor, you said that, um, you didn't want to get the, at the jail, you didn't want to connect to all the other rooms?
Well, I, we, it was initially going to be connected.
That's right.
And, but then, the decision was made that, that because of the footprint of the jail for possible future jail expansion, that it'd be, that it'd be removed from there and to be more convenient for the public, it was going to be put further out toward the road. And that was all done unfortunately, a meeting that I, you know, the one meeting I didn't attend, apparently that was decided at that meeting. Um, I know Bernie McCabe was there, I know Bob Dillinger was there, um, uh, but I, I wasn't able to attend that meeting and, uh, but they determined that it was better to move it out toward the road, like I said, for potential future jail expansion and just, I guess, the, the layout. The, I don't know, I think there were many reasons, but I can't really speak to all of them, but I, I wish it stayed, I wish it was connected.
So, you're speaking of this, let's say, a virtual communication with the prisoners and the family?
Well, with, with that, we, we, we can do that, but also just the transportation. Now, like I said, they'll, they'll drive from pretty much the front of that lot to, to the courthouse, the front of that lot in the courthouse, so that minimizes certainly the liability for the county as far as driving them all over the county, you know, you know, literally van upon, you'll sit there, you'll see, and, and I, I know Nikki's seen this as well, van upon van upon van upon van coming to the courthouse because, you know, people are in custody and we need to resolve their cases.
Now, the old, the old courthouse here, courthouse here, used to have the jail, which is right beside.
Yes.
They shut that down years ago.
Yes.
What was the impact on that?
Well, the, the impact on that was obviously much the same, where all of a sudden now we're, now we're, because it was determined that it was funny, I guess, uh, more efficient to have the jail in the central location, uh, that they, that, uh, we, we weren't able to bring people over. I guess one of the best analogies, and I think your question's a good one, is in Pinellas, if you need someone because the jail and the courthouse are connected, you know, someone needs to come in for their cases, or you need to bring witnesses in or whatever, they literally walk through a tunnel and they're in the courthouse. There they are. And, and so there's no transportation, there's no, hey, we got to get on the phone and maybe we get this person here this afternoon, or they have to run a special van, or maybe court runs late, the vans leave, some deputy now has to drive the person and land the legs. They, they were able to avoid kind of all of that by being connected to it, and that's why initially I thought that was really the best plan and the best idea, because it really, it really streamlined everything and made it that much more efficient. So, yeah, that's a great question.
Do you think with the new jail addition going on, could we build a courthouse that would make that connection smooth and easier?
I was told before that, that that was, that they, that the decision had been made to move it out toward the, to further out toward the road for the public, for parking, because I guess that's a big issue there as far as how the parking lot is configured and the, and, and, and people would, the jurors would have to park so far away that, you know, at 96 degrees in August, by the time they got in, you know, we'd be showering them off just to try to get them to, to be a little cooler. So that's why it was my understanding that they moved it out more toward the road to have the parking around it to make it more accessible for the public.
I, I think it's good for us to have a full presentation from the board.
Mm-hmm.
Go through this whole thing, maybe in a site visit, or go up there and go look at it, at the roof at some point.
Whatever you need, I am, I am at your beck and call.
So, I was going to go over there. Um, when the airport was built, um, they built it for themselves, but they also built some extra office space. You mentioned like a private partnership. Do you see, especially with, I've got to think, there's a bunch, a bunch of attorneys that would like to be right there, other folks as well, do you see the benefit to building a bigger structure than we would even need to kind of accommodate that and help offset some of the costs?
I, I think that's, once again, when they looked into that previously, because I thought that was a good idea back then, we were, we were all in on that as well. And, you know, the other thing that, that they did, you know, kind of south of here is, um, when they built that courthouse, they shelved some courtrooms. So, because, you know, once you get the big building built, you can just shell some of them out, and then as, as the population grew, they didn't have to add on, they didn't have to add another wing, they just said, okay, we're going to build this one out, we're going to build that one out, and eventually they, they filled that courthouse up, the, the justice center, anybody who wants to take a tour of that, and they had to build an annex onto that because of the growth, even, even in Pinellas, the growth, they had to build an annex with additional courtrooms and chambers and staff positions and all that sort of thing. So they had to build a, a, a whole separate annex, uh, kind of on that campus as well that's connected to the other building.
Right. I think it'd be good for, again, for you to come to see us, let's go talk about it, let's go on site, and maybe we'll bring some state legislative out there as well and just kind of talk.
Whatever you need. I'm like the bad penny, you're not going to, I, we're not going to worry about it. And you guys know that, I mean, so I'm not telling you anything you don't know, it's like, oh, here you come again.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Cabala?
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I was going to say, this is, you know, great, it's a great layout, Your Honor, thank you for that. Uh, it's, it's clear this is a several hundred million dollar capital, capital investment, um, and, and so we're going to need to develop a funding strategy for that. I think it will be a combination of grants, which we're already looking into that, legislative asks appropriations at the state and federal levels as well as cash, and maybe even some cash. So, um, you can sit back and, to your point, Commissioner, as, as we go through the budgeting process, uh, you know, maybe that's, we can start looking at that, so we can narrow that out, because it will take several years for that to come to fruition, and it's obviously at the need today, so we'll start taking action to develop a funding strategy, then we won't make any progress.
I'd just like to make sure that's a short-term look, so we can start it.
Yeah.
I don't like long projects of my age. I don't see a good fruition, and, uh...
I'm right there with you, I, I'm with you on that one, that's for sure. And, and as I even suggested, I said, you guys may even want to kind of see what they're doing, because they're going to be funding 330 million south of here, so say, hey, how are you guys going to be funding this as well? See if there's some good strategies, like you guys talked about, kind of economy of getting together on some of these contracts and things like that, hey, you know, you know, dialogue's good, communication's great.
Your Honor, thank you for your presentation.
No, thank you, but, and I sincerely mean it, I know that Mike, I think, will verify that, because we've had some really good meetings with he and his team and Eric and everything, and, you know, whatever you guys need, I'm there, I'm going to be there for you. Like I said, this is my community, I grew up here, I think this is an important part of what we do. So I do this not only as the chief judge, but also as somebody who lives here and grew up here. I think it's important to, to see Pasco grow and, and thrive and be that premier community.
Thank you. Now it's time for, uh, Mr. Brian for, uh, some final elections.
I'm passing the clicker.
Thank you. I, I don't have a problem with that, just me is all I got for this morning. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for hosting this workshop, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'll keep it brief in interest of time. Um, I do want to speak to some, some bragging rights about us before I speak to our challenges, if I may. I'm especially proud of our partnership between my office and the Board of County Commissioners as well as my fellow constitutional officers. President Reagan once famously said, the eight most feared words in the English language, I'm from the government, I'm here to help, not in Pasco. I think back to, it was just over four years ago, when we were, our past presidential preference primary, COVID had just come upon our shores, we lost about 350 poll workers, and elections aren't a suggestion, the show must go on, and they were scared, and I reached out to county administration and my fellow constitutionals and asked for help, I needed election workers, and you all came through and saved me. We had election workers who had never been election workers before, had no training, and they got a battlefield training on Election Day, and we pulled it off, and so I'm forever grateful for that. That resulted in what's called the Civic League Program, so we have county employees given back to the community while serving as election workers, I'm truly grateful for that. I could go on and on, I could list every office to speak about the individual partnerships, for the interest of time, I will pass on that. With regards to our budget, ordinarily we would have our budget done, I want that noted, we're usually pretty early, but we've been laser focused since late last year with our March presidential preference primary, as well as we just wrapped up our statutory duties for the six municipal elections that we had. One race had a one vote difference, by the way, so every vote does count, and I want to thank you all Commissioners for serving on the campus board, thank you Commissioner Whitman, just served, that's a huge, huge help. With regards to our budget, I will say I'm very, very proud that we are consistently one of the lowest cost for voters of any SOE office in the state. We continue that, and hopefully that trend continues, of course. While we are still finalizing our budget submission for the upcoming year, I do estimate a reduction in our current fiscal year, so it'll be a negative, so that's a good thing. You all know the way my budget works, we live our life in two-year cycles, and so now we're in the heavy year where we have the presidential preference primary, the primary, and the upfront money for the general, so going into the next budget year will be solely just the general and our general operations as well. Couple of things with several of our ongoing challenges, this is not going to be a new concept, but growth and the impact, I think of our office, you know, our staff, of course, facilities, you know, the, our election service center that, not quite as long as you've been dealing with, we had to beg and beg and beg for years, and we got our new building that we share with the county data center, and I believe we went in there in 2014, and we're already beyond capacity with 120 precincts. We literally have nowhere else to put stuff, and that's only a 10-year-old facility. So, and also with early voting, you know, our vote by mail numbers are down, requests are down substantially from the past, so we're expecting a vibrant turnout for the upcoming general election, which we do. If voters are not going to vote by mail, they're going to vote in person, of course. One of the, one of the theories is that it's really going to be heavy on early voting. That's going to be problematic for us, because we use county facilities for early voting, as you all know, and just the presidential preference primary, which had pretty low turnout, it was only one party, mind you, but the Wiregrass Ranch Athletic Complex, the parking was just, there was no parking to be had. First day of early voting, I went over to Land O' Lakes Recreation Center, and it was just baseball games going, Little League, there was not one spot in the entire thing. So I have concerns, we can, we'll have to work with Mr. Caraballo and staff going forward into the general election for that. The second is aging technology, also recurring theme. We are election day early voting tabulators, our DS 200s, they are on borrowed time, we've been using them for 16 years, so we implemented most of them in 2008, they are end of life and then some, quite honestly. And then also our, what we refer to as electronic poll books or EVIDS, we have a few years left, we have about four or five years on that for end of life, but you're talking several million dollars at a minimum for those two, so that's going to have to be addressed sooner than later. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I promise I keep it brief, and I did, I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all have. Thank you.
Good.
Good night, Commissioner.
I don't have any questions. Well, I guess I would ask, do you know about how many square feet of storage space you need? Is this for papers?
It's for everything, it's our election service center, or we refer to our warehouse affectionately, where we keep all of our bony equipment, it's where the data center is, where it's the merge building, the data center's upstairs. I don't have a number, Commissioner, more than we have. I'd have to, seriously, I'd have to go back.
So do you define your equipment on the east side, or would it link us for you to have equipment staged for the county?
No, for a variety of reasons, for economies of scale, logistics, we need to have it in one place, because there's a lot of things that, there's so much that we do behind the scenes, I confess I had no idea before I came to Supervisor, there's a lot of things we do behind the scenes, like testing each equipment, having it in one place, security, everything involving elections now is perception, security is everything, so we need to have that in one spot, so.
So how about square footage, square feet you think you need?
I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to confirm with my folks, I don't know, I'd have to do analysis and I'll get back to you all.
We can check our facilities.
Was your building designed to expand?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Well, that's not.
Have all that space where you want.
Yeah. Will do, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, we have property appraisers, Mr. Mike Wells.
Good morning Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update on the property appraisers office. I'm joined with Chief Deputy Brendan Fitterer and Finance HR Director Lisa Gonzalez, in case you have any questions that I cannot answer. I'm excited to share some improvements and a brief overview of our position in the marketplace and how we compare to other agencies statewide, and of course, where we're headed in the future. Since I took office, our budget has undergone steady predictable increase despite Pasco's explosive growth. I know the judge brought it up, we're all talking about the growth, I mean, it's crazy. And we now have, we now have more than 317,000 parcels and a real estate market value of 80 billion. It's no secret that property assessment and ultimately property taxes are the single largest funding mechanism for local government. So here's some insight of just how efficient and effective we're serving the citizens of Pasco County. Our office budget per capita is $12.12 per reference, that's the third lowest of the state's 67 counties. The statewide average is $20 per capita for property appraisers. Our budget per parcel is $21.30, that's the fifth lowest in the state of Florida, and our parcels per position is 5,100, that's right, more, a little bit more than 5,000 parcels per team member, that's the fifth highest in the state, the statewide average is 3,400 per parcel. And I might add that we are the reigning champs of the kickball championship. Going it out there, Fasano's team wasn't there, but next year's a new year.
We were working.
We were. So, but seriously, so what does that mean? I'm very proud of my team, every single day we're doing more with less to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Some of these efficiencies have come thanks to partnerships with county administrator and of course Eric and his team, I can't tell you how often we meet with them, it's weekly on several things, with Todd Bailey, I mean, seriously, it's neat to be on his side of it, because I was on that side, but truly, the partnership that we have with the county, I could not ask for anything better. If we need something, they need something, we're there, it really is awesome, so thank you all. As Commissioner Starkey knows, I'm just saying that because she's the one who brought it to our attention, we're using True Roll to weed out exemption fraud and put value back on the tax roll and real dollars in hands of this board. Last year alone, these efforts accounted for more than 1 million in recovered revenue. We're working towards state-of-the-art aerial imaging capabilities as we speak with IT, because the way it works now, we do like one, we get one flyover every four years, the new technology, we get three to four flyovers a year, which not only help us, it will help you, I believe it off the sheriff's office, it's going to, it's going to be unbelievable for Pasco County, but I understand the bid process is taking a little bit, but we'll get that done. But it's going to help us to be even more efficient where our team's not out there, because the way it works now, we do rechecks, the days of walking our properties are over, we do not do that. So this is going to be able to help us, this new technology will pick up structural changes on a building, which will help us, it's actually certified survey-wise, so we can actually do it in-house, in the office, and figure out that square footage and add that value. It's going to be a great thing for the county, for folks that, I know there's no one that does unpermitting stuff, but if they do, we can catch them with the unpermitted stuff, just saying. We are, we are pushing to be paperless, integrating multiple vendors with our camera system into tablets for our field team as well, and again, make no mistake, there will be costs associated with this, with all the growth, personnel, technology, and capital expenses. With time, I'm trying to be quick, but I want to make sure we go over this, this is great you all are doing this. To highlight a few things we're looking at over the next five years, we'll undergo server upgrades and maintenance in the next 36 months as required safeguarded backup our systems, these are capital expenses. IT security is a major expense, I know somebody else brought up Hernando and what they're dealing with. I can, it's good that we don't, I don't want to say we don't need to worry about it, but we're working together to make sure that doesn't happen. We now have two, but we may need four programmers to deflect continual rising software costs. We're streamlining process to keep programs in-house and provide an efficient tax roll with less reliance on vendors. We have no way to predict future legislation, which really dictates our budget. A change in homestead could change entire process, just like the senior exemption did, which we've already added two additional employees, we're getting it up to speed so they're ready as soon as this rolls out, it's going to be a great thing for our seniors in Pasco County. I don't really have anything else, again, we appreciate your time, I don't know if you all have any questions, but appreciate it.
I'm so glad that the True Roll is working like that, I have a couple of questions on that revenue. So finding people who were illegally homesteaded, whether on purpose or not, were their fines paid, or did they just get added to the tax?
No, there's fines, we legally, you know, statute law, we're able to go back 10 years, you know, there's, every situation's different, but 99% of the time they're paying back taxes, penalties, late fees.
And I'm sending you stuff all the time.
Yes, and we've gone back 10 years, yes, we take it very seriously, especially the ones that are late.
Okay, so where did that, where does that money go? Does that come to the county, does it go to the state?
Goes, goes back to you, goes back to Board of County Commissioners.
So it went back to us and to our general revenue?
Brendan, is that it?
Yes, yes, general fund. Essentially, we're recovering the value, so then the revenue is in turn recovered back on the whole, just as the entire funding mechanism works.
So, so it comes in as you get it? Or does it come in in one big check? How's that coming?
We collect.
There, I was going to say.
We collect everything.
We don't collect anything, Mike was.
He assesses, I want to make it very clear, he assesses, I collect.
All right, so not only did we get money in fines, and so that's a one-time payment, and it's a large fine. Yeah, 10 years, that's a big one. We actually had a house in Aristida that somehow got missed, although it turned out to be our fault, but for three years, big house, it was now on the tax form, and they were paying as undeveloped. Okay, so not only did we get the fines, but we added those people back onto our taxes.
Absolutely.
So that's really wonderful. On your flyover with the drones, I think this is brilliant.
No drones, it's planes, but yes. No, no drones, yeah, airplane.
Why can't you use drones, which are cheaper than planes? Is that a legislative issue?
This technology this company has with the planes is unbelievable, it can pick up like, I want to say down to three inches, it's pretty amazing what, and we can go over it more, I mean, I know Mr. Caraballo's up to speed on it, but we could, we spent a lot of time meeting with several vendors, and we picked one that we all thought would help you all as well as us.
Just, just for information, that company that we hired to do permitting with kind of our personal intelligence, they also have a drone application that can go over property and catch code violations, but apparently we're not allowed, the county's not allowed to do code violations by air, which I think is something we have to look at legislatively, because when new technology comes up and can save the taxpayers a lot of money, I don't know why we can't use it. But you can use it for tax collector, I mean, for property appraiser, why can't we use it when people are, you know, doing things without permission? That's kind of the question, and, okay, well, that, those are my questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, how many years ago when this technology was first being used, there's a lot of pushback on what might happen, and they talked about their effects.
What?
He was fined on by a homeowner.
Google Earth, I do it all day long.
Question from, on the previous slides, we saw VAB numbers for appeals were up, I mean, did any reason for that?
I mean, the more houses, the more appeals, I mean, we've got 317 parcels, and I can just tell you, and I know Nikki, Heather spoke on it, we spend with them hours, I mean, when I tell you our days on this stuff, it's, they're, their team's unbelievable, I think there's five of them, they do an unbelievable job helping us, because it's important, I mean, these are, you know, 50% are the only ones that actually come forward, but it's still a huge number, so. Brendan, do you want to add something?
No, Commissioner, to that point, it's also a product of the marketplace in the past two years, too, we've had historic increases in store value, so even folks who are capped, combined with other assessments that have come along the way, that, you know, they've seen more fluctuation in their tax bills in the past two years than they have over the past many years, so that's, I think that's been a good drive.
Mr. Bryan?
Thank you. Yes, no secret, I'm holding for the government taking what it needs, absolutely what it only needs to operate, but I appreciate, especially during tax time, our office gets a number of calls, people wanting to understand their values, think that they've been overbilled and what have you, and I just appreciate it to Michael, your office, and Brendan, your staff, for taking time to meet with our folks and help them understand their obligation to the county and make it clear what they're, what they're paying for. Folks call us in a panic, and we're very sensitive to that, appreciate what you do to help them, obviously.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wells, for being here today.
Thank you, Chairman.
Appreciate it. Now we'll move on to our.
Yes, fines.
Well, just think about it, you're not a glass, you know.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sada, welcome, and just a form of information for sure, we're doing this the manual way because these bikes don't work, do you think?
That's good.
We're having to use our voice a little louder.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning, everyone. Tax collector, one of the things that, of course, we do is collect property taxes along with many other assessments that are put on for the people of Pasco. We've expanded our offices from four to five since I've been here, we put one office in the Westland Chapel area because we knew the growth, and it's worked out very well. In fact, when we first put it up 10 years ago, I was concerned, will people come? And the first couple of days was about 60 or 70, we see now 600 to 700 people in that office each day. It's overwhelming, we see between 50 and 60,000 people in our five offices. We are now, we have expanded every one of our offices for the potential of growth, the continuation of growth. We are now purchasing land, we should be closing by the end of this week or the beginning of next week, for land in the Angeline community to build a new office there. So very quickly, when I became tax collector, I should say, we became tax collector, I'm blessed to have 225 of the best employees, I call them second to none throughout the state. We were, we were in the old days, Arcaic back then, maybe a few people had voicemail, like two, two people in our whole entire organization had voicemail, maybe a half dozen people had access to email, that has changed dramatically. Our staff was, starting salary was $9.25 an hour, it's now at $20 an hour. We have a call center, we hear from about, in fact, I just got the nut, the message that we, we took 1,060 calls yesterday at our call center. Something to stress, we have an unbelievable relationship with the county, Mike Caraballo and his staff, second to none, the county commissioners, you have brought this county to the 21st, into the 21st century like, like never before. We have 625,000 people living in Pasco County now, and one of the things that we have strived to do, and we've been very successful, is to work very closely with our constitutional officers, especially with Mike Wells and his staff, because we get about the same phone calls when the tax notices go out, and we share stories, but we also share ideas and assist each other. Brian Corley, of course, I kid him, because we probably registered more voters in our offices than he does in his. It's called the motor voter law that was passed many, many years ago. Clerk of the Court, the same thing, we work very closely with our sheriff as well, and one of the things that, that we've, we don't rely on is money from the state, the federal government, and from the county, although the county's very generous, whenever we need something, they're there helping us. We rely on services, we provide a service to someone, we charge a fee for that service, whether it be a driver's license, renewing a registration, collecting property taxes, tourist development tax, we do fingerprints now, we do concealed weapon permits, we do Florida versus, we call ourselves a one-stop shop. Our budget does not go to you, of course, it goes to the Department of Revenue each year, they look it over, they have some questions sometimes, but most of the time it's approved without any problems. We're trying to do, we're doing our best to keep up with the growth in this county, we expect to see, of course, over the next umpteen years, we're going to see about 750,000 people in this county, and we're prepared. I think that's about it, I'm sure you may have some questions for me, we're excited and love what I do, I served in the Florida Legislature for almost 20 years, but someone asked me the other day, would you ever want to go back, I said absolutely not. I learned something new here as a tax collector, and anyway, that's about it. Questions, concerns, if you have any criticisms, wait until I leave.
Judge has a question.
Well, I just wanted to point out, Mike, from the court's perspective, we have the veterans stand out.
Yes, yes, you do.
We help veterans get their driver's license back, we work with veterans that are in the criminal justice system to get out of that system and help them get back on their feet, and we work very closely with Mike's office.
Yes, sir.
As far as that goes and in processing those drivers, like, because many times that's all they need is that driver's license.
To get a job.
To get a job.
Yes, sir.
And so we work together closely with that, and I just wanted, we're doing that again this Friday, and I wanted to just extend a thank you for you and your office for being so gracious about working with us on that and being so effective.
Thank you, Judge, and we'll be there again. One of the things that we brought into our county recently is a mobile, a mobile unit. We are now able to take this mobile unit to our assisted living facilities, to our nursing homes, out to when we have programs helping our veterans, we can take it there and get them their ID and get them their driver's license, especially with our seniors, seniors who might be in a nursing home, that's, they're not capable of coming to our office, so we go out there, make sure to get that ID, at least that ID renewed, so they can get their pharmaceutical drugs, and of course, our veterans. Our veterans are key, helping them make sure they get, they take whatever tests they need, getting that license so they can get to work the next day. Yes, sir. And Judge, by the way, I went to Gulf High School as well, but a lot, lot more years before than you went, I'm sure, so.
Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, just coming from my first budget cycle, I'm sure glad I had a bell to ding for you.
Yes, yes.
To return our budget and decide to see, it's really a sign of how well you operate, how much you bring back to us. And since you guys have taken over, service is just impeccable, morale within the organization is high, and I just appreciate the level of service and outreach and accessibility to all the folks in Pasco County, you guys touch everyone, hats off to your team, and thank you for all you do.
Bless you, yeah. Our average wait time is under 10 minutes, as we see six, close to 60,000 people each month, and I'm blessed and truly blessed with the staff we have. We have fun, we enjoy what we do, and I'm happy to see that the governor signed a bill the other day that the tax collectors can give out bonuses to our employees now and offer them some state programs, if they adopt a child, they're going to get, they're going to get assistance from the state, so that's going to help as well as our staff who want to get involved, more involved, so, yeah.
Well, I do want to...
Why am I not surprised, if you know?
For running just a stellar, stellar program, I mean, we hear it from our constituents all the time, how efficient and wonderful this program is, and this multi-unit is amazing.
Yeah.
And I want to suggest that this be one of the programs that we offer up to NACO for their awards.
Oh, yes.
So the National Association of Counties is coming to Tampa this year, meets once a year around the country, and that's such an innovative idea that I want to share it with the other counties around the country, and certainly want to nominate that for one of our awards.
Absolutely, thank you very much, yeah, thank you. It's worked out very well, we've already been to several nursing homes, and our senior citizens are so grateful, and it's wonderful, meeting with them and making sure they have that, most of them have IDs, getting that ID renewed, so they can, you know, they have it, and that's key, because everyone needs an ID, I mean, they just do. God forbid they have to go from one nursing home to another, go to the hospital, go to a new doctor, the first thing they're asked for is their ID, and they'll have one now.
And do you register them to vote, or?
Well, I'm going to tell you a story. This is a true story. We do not, unless, unless they require, well, we have, we are by law, by law, we have to ask them a list of questions. One of them is, do you want to register to vote, or do you want to change your voter registration? Similar questions like that. We ask them all kinds of questions, do you want to be a poll worker, things like that. It is required under the motor voter law that was passed many years ago. I had a call from someone, which was absolutely amazing to me, it's wild out there, that they read where we have this motor voter, I mean, this mobile unit going to the nursing homes, and she was quite upset, quite upset that, and she and her friends had read this in the paper, they were very upset. And I said, why are you upset, ma'am? And she kept saying, well, this is, you don't need to do this. I said, well, it's for our nursing home, our elderly, and those who can't come to our office. It came down to, and I won't tell you what party she belonged to, but she said, well, really what's going to happen is, you're going to get people who will get registered to vote, and the such-and-such party will get them to vote absentee. That's, that was her rationale. And you shake your head, because we want to help senior citizens and the invalid who can't get to our office and getting an ID card. This person and her friends were more concerned about someone registering to vote and ordering an absentee ballot. It's wild, but, yeah.
Yep, that's it?
Thank you very much, God bless you.
My mother was...
Oh, yes, Commissioner.
So thanks for all you've done, and I appreciate especially the seniors that needed handicap
Yes.
card, how easy you guys made that.
Yep.
I got one for my mother a few months back.
Very good.
It was really nice. But I also would like to say between you and Judge Gray, between Career Central, AM Skills, whatever, when you get those people that are working to get the license and work for a job.
Yeah.
Do I have to put resources to get them?
Yeah, yeah.
Get them all the work, because there's plenty of work out there.
Absolutely, yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you.
Well, since I'm last.
Join the team, Commissioner.
I'd like to thank you for all you do for the citizens of Pasco County.
Thank you.
I am very grateful and thankful of what you do for your employees and for the outreach you have to accept new employees.
Yes, sir.
And how you mentor in them to do their job, and I, for PR work and everything inside your office and all, and social beings of those folks.
Yes, sir.
They're the best.
Thank you very much, thank you, I think so.
They last to the top, and I think it's because of the way you work with them.
Well, I'm blessed, I don't want to take, I don't take the credit, it's, I'm just, you know, when I got to the office, I wanted to make some changes, and we've been successful with, with the people that we, that I, you know, I guess many leaders, many leaders talk about, it's important who you surround yourself with, and you've all done the same thing, you have a wonderful staff, whether it be our constitutions, and we're all very blessed, but thank you very much, sir.
Really, I mean, as a county commissioner, and we only, we only hired two people, and the rest of them work for our office and...
Yes.
Mr. Carvalho.
Yes.
So the fact of it is, we all have good staff, and thank goodness that we did it, because we couldn't carry on the business we have to do in Pasco County without a good staff and people with good attitudes, good work.
Yes, sir.
It takes all of us.
Absolutely, yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
God bless you, yeah.
All right, now we're up. Mr. Scherf?
I appreciate it. So separately than Mr. Fasano, we cannot charge for services.
I thought you did.
I don't know, what a business model, yeah, business model. No, I don't know. So, yeah, it's interesting, we always get that, well, you write tickets, we did 20,000 traffic stops last year, and people say like, oh, that money goes to you, like, to law enforcement. It doesn't, does not go towards law enforcement, that's a big misnomer.
Just like when we approve a gas station, it does not go in our pocket.
So I want to thank, I want to start thanking Mr. Carvalho, J.J. Murphy, I don't know if J.J.'s here, and Chief Perez. So for probably at least six years, we've been trying to get the TAC-MED program, Tactical Medical Program, Fire Rescue, partnered with SWAT team. For some reason, it cannot get done, I mean, it was just one block after another block, but finally, we had graduation last week, and I think we probably had at least eight, nine, 10 guys from Fire Rescue that came over, so that was huge, but I'll tell you, I mean, I'll get into a couple scenes later on, but we've had major incidents going on where, you know, Dayton City, there was a guy that was shooting at us, we had a guy probably about a month ago with propane tanks, that was going to blow up, wanted to blow us up, blow his house up, everything, and Fire Rescue was staging, so that partnership, it has never been like this, it's unbelievable, and at the first training center, you know, you can constantly find Fire Rescue out there all the time, we actually got them now linked up, so our Canine was the first one in the nation that would have a Coast Guard helicopter, and so, and now we're getting with Fire Rescue, that partnership, so that partnership has been unbelievable, so I don't want to go unrecognized that, I want to thank them for that. So let's start off, you know, hopefully if we can hold off any questions, and I know one big thing is the MSTU, I'm going to bring that up, but if we can hold off, it's going to be part of the presentation, but if we can hold off on questions and talk about that till afterwards, I greatly appreciate it, because we've got a lot of slides to go through, because a lot of information, like, I know Commissioner Oakley can just say, hey, how many deputies you got, how many deputies, so I want to get into that and explain a lot of these things, because it's critical, and I get it, you got a tough job deciding and making priorities, so as you go along, to understand those things. So here's a number, and I can, I can understand Mr. Carvalho and his team, or your team probably realizes, you know, Pasco County serves one of the largest populations in the state of Florida. You know, Polk County, Penalos are right by us, but we still serve a larger population. Even, you know, Hillborough Sheriff's Office is larger, but it goes down to one thing, we don't have municipalities, we have four municipalities, and, you know, we're roughly 92% unincorporated, so if they want to annex, I'm all for it. Annexation's a good word for me, I like that, they take things over, that's good, because if you take a county like Brevard County, a lot of annexation, Sheriff's Office is kind of comparable, but, you know, when our budgets are the same, they can do so much more because, I'm relying on it because they have municipalities, they have police departments, and they are able to assist, I'll tell you right now, Wesley Chapel is probably one of the grass, it's not incorporated, but it's probably one of the fastest-growing areas in the country, and it could be a city on itself. If that was an incorporated area, the amount that it would take off of your Fire Rescue, your services, our services, would be unbelievable, so I'm not sitting there saying, oh, you know, start the movement, but I'm just saying, these are things we look at when we look at Pasco County and we look at the Sheriff's Office. So here's the budget numbers, as you're aware of, $150 million last year, and hopefully that'll be our starting point this year, Pasco government's $2.1 billion, and, you know, we're roughly 7.1, 7.15% of all of it, but, you know, the whole thing is, it's $2 billion to taxpayers, I know a lot of it, we had a good conversation with Mr. Carvalho, a lot of it goes to roads, those types of projects, those big projects, but it's all that comes down, it's taxpayer dollars, and how do we use it? So, you know, we're grateful for the 40% of the new abhorrence, but when you look at the whole overall thing, when citizens are saying, hey, what's your percentage? We're at 7.15 of the entire budget. You know, this is the one number, you know, I know the citizen survey is critical, we, the county does it every year, and it always keeps going back to the same thing, it's public safety, they want to feel safe, no matter what else comes down to, public safety is always the number one issue, you can have the greatest amenities in the world, but if people don't feel safe in those amenities, they will never go to them, and it will be, and honestly, I remember years ago, I think it was Phil Crone with the EDC had mentioned that one of the biggest issues he gets questioned on is how safe is the community when people want to move here, because they have to bring their families, they have to bring, you know, to the schools, they want to know that, so public safety is critical. Here's the agency profiles, you're aware, 697 certified deputies, that is from the newest member that just came in the door to myself, detectives, everybody who has a badge, 697 certified, 414 civilians. So, and you're going to see in some of these slides, and it's hard to see with the red, but it said not provided by the county, and the reason why we put that is just so you understand it's not coming out of $150 million budget. So just wanted you to understand is that, hey, look at this, look at that, just so you have apples, apples, oranges, oranges, you understand what comes in and what comes out. You know, we're fortunate to get the Citizen Center, but, you know, there's still some issues with ADA compliance, the HVAC system, the security measures, so we have to get them, get them addressed, and that was something we met with Mr. Carvalho with yesterday. You know, the Grove substation, they were able to give us some space, that's provided by the Grove, Stanford Bay premium outlets gave us space provided by them, and so those are the type of things that, yep, if it was, yeah, sorry, we shouldn't have gone red. Red is not a good color.
No, it's just that I've got the slide, because I can't really read that, but the whole slide doesn't show up, so.
We'll get the whole one.
Something in the technology.
So here's some common misconceptions, and I know the worst thing we ever have, and this is one thing we do in the Sheriff's Office, and I'm going to start, I should have started with this, like you're about to say, being blessed to have a phenomenal team, and the women and men in this organization, I cannot be more proud of, and I think we're all blessed to have great teams, and the culture that's been created that, you know, it's not just putting on a uniform, it's not just being a part of the Sheriff's Office, but it's about being part of a family, and, you know what, we all go to work for how many hours a day, but we go home and we have other lives, and things happen in those other lives that will affect your professional life, and that's why we built that culture around the Family Support Network about agency resiliency, is the fact that if we do not make things good at home and help them at their home and their personal lives, then professionally, they're not going to be able to succeed, and I can tell you, when you look across the nation, when bad things happen with law enforcement, there was probably something that happened in their personal lives that was never addressed, and that's what led to major incidents, and so that's something that we do as an organization. But going back to the slides, the common misconception, so the LISO program, so unfortunately, Mr. Biden is doing everything he can to get rid of the LISO program, if you're not familiar with the LISO program, so, and I'll get into it, but agency helicopters, all our agency helicopters, except for one that came from the state of Florida, have come from the military surplus. LISO is the military surplus. The MRAP, the armored vehicle, it's high-water vehicle, recovery vehicle, came from the military. I believe Fire Rescue has some LISO vehicles also, but all is that, all is that, all of that is going away from law enforcement, I believe it's probably going to go away from Fire Rescue, it may not, but all, you know, when we have those storms and we're able to roll in there and save people and rescue people, once those vehicles are done, there's nothing to replace anything right now. So we're safe, we're facing a major issue with that. The helicopters, so I'll talk about the helicopters. I know, oh, I don't want to make some work, please, I mean, it's downtime, yep, currently we have six helicopters. So I know sometimes there's misconceptions out there, is that we have a fleet of helicopters, they're all Vietnam-era helicopters, one Huey came from the state of Florida, the rest are all from the LISO program. The smaller ones are 58s, they're, they're little helicopters, and they do cost a lot of money to maintain, so our plan is to, the Huey helicopters, we want to keep, we're going to maintain them, we're going to keep them because they serve several purposes. One is, if there's ever a big search and rescue, and we have to go out to Anclaw, we have to go somewhere to search, rescue somebody in the green swamp, we can repel somebody down and get them. If we have to send people out to go to the rooftop, we can send them on a rooftop. If there's, God forbid, a fire, I remember years ago, we had a fire at Starkey, had we had the Hueys in, we would have been able to drop water. Now we're able to drop water and brush fire. We're the only agency in the region that has that capability, because the state of Florida was gracious enough to give us one, and we got one from the military surplus. The rest of them, we're going to be phasing out over the next several years as we go to a drone first responder program, we're one of the first ones in the nation to look at this. It's a responder, so not proactive, we can't just fly, and that's state law, Commissioner, I don't want to say, I don't want to interrupt somebody else's time, state law will prevent proactive, but it's reactive, so what we're partnering to do is, you know, having nests, they call them, over different locations, and if something happens, that drone will go out first, look out for somebody and advance that search, and I could tell you it's critical, because, and you'll see one of the slides coming up, we've had over 1,000 people go missing a year, you know, runaway, suicidal, if we get those drones up immediately, then we're going to be much better, that's what the helicopters primarily for, is to search and rescue, that's, that's what, but we're going to phase them out over time, but please, no, we're happy to show anybody those 58s, ones usually cannibalized, or twos usually cannibalized, to get parts to put in the other ones, but...
What's a 58?
Vietnam-era helicopters, they're all older, the Huey you'll know because it's the, the bigger helicopter, but the other ones are the smaller ones, I think you went up in...
Without any doors, my...
Yeah, yeah. So you can see, we are not flying the most prestigious of equipment.
No.
So that's the problem that we're facing, is that, you know, these are going to go away in the future. Some other thing, so the Sheriff's Office has not had a purpose-built building facility since 2004. That's something, you know, now we're able to, the new administration, and we have investigators in there, so had we not gone for state dollars, because of the growth over the past since 2004, we would have had nowhere to put anybody, so that's why that first building's getting those state and federal dollars, have been critical to what we do. The first center, training, as I said, it all came from state and federal dollars. Something that's unique about our Sheriff's Office, I think our deputies wear more hats than a lot of other organizations. So they're not just flying, able to fly drones, they're detectives. They're not just able to be on a SWAT team, they're patrol. They're not just, you know, and our team, besides being, you know, mental health, cyber, they do multiple things, that's where first comes in, that's why with Fire Rescue, it's so critical now that we're doing these trainings together, we at FEMA now, I would say our first responders, because of the partnership that's being created at first, I put Pasco Fire Rescue and Pasco Sheriff's Office against anybody right now, if it had, if something, we don't want anything bad to happen, but if something bad happened, their teams are working so well together in such critical situations, I think we would be more successful I think we would be more successful than had we not been in these situations. I know we will be more successful. So some other misconceptions, ten deputies out each year for the BOCC. We appreciate those ten deputies, but here is the issue we have and you'll see later on, we're not keeping up with the growth. So since July, the BOCC has approved ten thousand residential units in the past six months. So roughly that's, you know, we look at the ratio, the FDLE numbers, if we want to go for two deputies, two deputies per thousand ratio, that should be forty deputies. Since July, that should have been allocated with those residential. And I understand that the residential, it's not going to go up tomorrow. It almost seems like it though with the way our county is grooming. But, and I'll show you the lag time, by the time these are being built, we still won't have enough. But I'm just telling you, we appreciate ten extra deputies, but it's not, if only in the past six months, we would need an additional forty, we are falling way behind the curve. Um, some other common misconceptions that canine, you know, I know everybody's going, wow, you know, we've so many canines, it's absolutely true. And you know what? We look at everything, not for the fact that it's a public safety issue and we're saving lives, but it's a business model. And so all of our canines have been donated by local businesses and, uh, citizens. They've given us the money for the canines. And so they're a force multiplier. So I'm going to explain very briefly how they're a force multiplier. So pick one of those squares up there. And so in the middle of the square would be, I'm just going to use it, the Walmart at Little and Fifty-four. A little kid goes missing from that Walmart at Fifty-four, somebody commits a robbery at Walmart at Fifty-four. You set up a perimeter around the Walmart. So you have a large perimeter, deputies on that perimeter, while that is going on, you're waiting for a canine. So if there is only one canine working the entire county, the probability of you finding that kid very quickly, that suicidal person very quickly, or that suspect very quickly diminishes. The faster we're able to get somebody, the faster we can catch somebody, but there's a monetary value to it also. If we have that perimeter, you have now deputies set up on that perimeter. Those deputies are costing you money because they're sitting on a perimeter rather than handing calls for service. People don't stop calling us because they know we're busy. I'll show you that on another slide. I mean, it almost seems like we get more calls because we're busy. So that's the issue that we face is that from a business model, we have to say, get the, get the suspect, get the missing child, get the person who's suicidal as quick as we can. Hey deputies, appreciate it, high five, get to your next call. So that's where we see why canine is so critical to what we do. Uh, the vehicles. So I know sometimes you go out there and you see, wow, there's a lot of vehicles at, you know, Atlanta Lakes on Central Boulevard. And so good bless you. And so, um, one of the things with the penny for Pasco is that the penny for Pasco does not fulfill the amount of vehicles that we have, that we need. Why do we have Tahos? The Tahos are actually probably the same amount as Explorers. The difference with the Tahoe is the amount of equipment we can get into it. We have to give our members equipment. Think about, they have to have shields for an active shooter. They have to have equipment to break into doors in case there's an active shooter. They have to have health equipment in case they're the first on scene for a medical call. Um, someone on the dive team, so they have to have dive equipment. If you're on the SWAT team, you got SWAT equipment. A Dodge Charger or Chevy Impala would not fit anything like, and so the other part too is there's a business component to it. Tahos bring back more money at auctions. Now I'm not sure compared to Explorers what they're going to be right now, but Tahos were doing better at the auction. The other one too is you probably noticed that we don't put lights on the top of our vehicles. We stopped doing that several years ago. It's because we were losing money at the auction because there are holes and you had to plug the holes and everything like that. And just people didn't want to have a car with like four white holes on the top and then plugged in. So that's why we put everything interior so that we would get more at the auction. So those are things I want to make sure you're aware of, but it isn't actually a safety issue for deputies, why we have those vehicles, but we actually return them. We get money back at a higher rate back, but it still will not fulfill the amount of money needed out of Penny for Pasco. So just going through some state information, I know you guys probably hate the FDLE numbers. I hate these FDLE numbers. I get that, but look, here's the thing. I don't want to create numbers because then it's, oh, you create your own numbers. If you all create numbers, oh, you create numbers. It's arbitrary, it's FDLE. We can't argue because they make their own numbers up themselves. They have their own formula and it's, it's not biased. So Pinellas County, one point eight eight deputies per thousand. You know, Hernando County, one point two eight. And so if we were at the Pinellas ratio, we would get, we would be an additional four hundred and seventy-eight deputies. Hernando ratio, we'd have another hundred and fifty-one deputies. The Hillsborough is at one point one eight, we'd have ninety-six. And Polk County Sheriff, God bless Sheriff Judd, but, um, we had that same level of funding as him, we would have eighty-five more additional law enforcement deputies. So right now we are currently sixty-third out of sixty-seven and we're hovering right at that one deputy per thousand ratio. So, and I'll go to this later on, I'll tell you, the most important thing for me is to keep the salaries high. Uh, I remember, I know several of you were on the commission when we had, we had over a hundred deputies leave to go to Tampa. And so our salaries are critical to what we do. So I'll tell you right now, um, as we rose, so the other agencies rose. And so you can see, you know, Tampa, of course, is sixty-eight thousand, you know, but those are the FRS. Pinellas County, sixty-five thousand, Clearwood, um, Hillsborough Sheriff's Office. Polk Sheriff's Office is starting, you know, roughly two thousand dollars more than us. And even the Pasco Corrections Officers are starting more than the Pasco Deputies. And the one thing is that they receive gap insurance and that's the one thing I will ask is that above and beyond our budget, I wish our deputies were treated, treated the same as fire rescue and the corrections officers and receive the gap insurance. So if you're not familiar with gap insurance, is everyone familiar with gap insurance is? Yes, maybe.
When they retire?
When they retire, they retire twenty-five years, they able to go to, they're able to get their retirement. So yes, thank you, thank you, Starkey.
I listen.
So, uh, so here's a, this is, uh, Commissioner Oakley, I know you've always asked, hey, how do we compare? What's our numbers like? So these are the numbers from twenty nineteen to now. If you look at the population, so, you know, twenty nineteen, we're roughly, you know, you could see where we were in the pattern. I don't have to explain this much. You'll see that the growth is exponential, but the growth for deputies is not. And so we went from one point zero eight deputies per thousand to, in twenty twenty-two, we're at one point zero deputies per thousand. I, I wish we got better numbers, but FDLE is usually about eighteen months behind. But I, I looked this up as I was going through notes and just to put things in perspective. Seattle, Washington, which was anti-law enforcement for, they went crazy on anti-law enforcement, they're at one point three officers per thousand. And Portland, Oregon is at one point two six officers per thousand. So those are the type of things, when we look at these numbers and we look to our growing county, you know, how do we compare? So, and this is a chart that, I apologize, it probably won't be able to see it, hopefully I'm not sure if you'll see it. So this goes back to something that, to me, where our biggest issues are lying, is that we are a booming residential county. There is absolutely no doubt about it. It's been that way for, for a while now. And I remember we had these conversations and I'll get into that a little bit later on about the zones. But when you look at the residential counties, we lose sixteen cents on the dollar. And so when you're losing sixteen cents on the dollar, that affects not just the sheriff's office, not just the fire department, but anything but an enterprise. So that's the one thing that, you know, I just want to bring the light is, hey, I'm glad we're getting Moffit. I'm glad Amazon is coming up on board. But we are so far behind that, and I'll get into the lag time too, catching up. It's some serious decisions that have to be made over the next several years because this to me, you know, when citizens say, what's going on? Say, look, I understand priorities have to be done, but when there's so much residential growth, and I know a lot of things are out of your hands when you have to approve certain projects, but the projects that have been approved for over the past dozen years are leading us to the problem that we're having today. So reality of residential growth, and this is something I talked about, um, since, you know, July of twenty twenty-three, those forty new residential, I mean, the, the ten thousand units would be forty deputies. And I know Date City has been talking about, I'm not, I think they implemented it is that when they approve residential, when they annex, they actually say, how many officers are you going to need to Chief Walters? And then they come up with that ratio and they give them that. So that's part of the conversation as people are approving projects, they're saying, what's this going to take? And I can imagine, you know, with us, fire rescue and other public first responders, that is critical to this conversation pieces.
They haven't done that.
Yeah. So here's the lag time. This is why I want to explain if anybody's not familiar with it. This is where it comes to us when residential growth comes in and how this affects us. So new development comes in anywhere in the county. In February twenty twenty-four, somebody opens their door, like, this is beautiful, I love my new house. Great. They don't pay taxes until January twenty twenty-five. So then in January twenty twenty-five, Mr. Fasano, Mr. Wells did his job, Mr. Fasano gets his money. Um, then Mr. Fasano, you know, goes over and it comes to the, uh, the board in October of twenty twenty-five. So one year and eight months after that person had moved in that house, that money is now dispersed to the different agencies. So the sheriff's office gets its money, fire gets its money, everybody gets its money. So then in October of twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry, let me get, so in October twenty twenty-five, we start planning ahead. Okay, we're getting, we got the money, hire, recruit, train. So now we're October of twenty twenty-six, which is two years and eight months after that person moved in their house in February twenty twenty-four, is now a deputy out on the street to handle that growth. I joke, but the reality is that, you know, that person still gets to call us, even though their money has not gone. And so that's the issue we have is we have two years and eight, two years, eight months of a gap. By the time we can catch up, if the money is there, and that's the one issue we are facing. And then, then it compounds in the fact that we're losing sixteen cents on every dollar that came into Mr. Fasano on residential. So it just keeps compounding the issue for everybody. So this is from Florida Tax Watch. I know, uh, Commissioner Starkey, I know you like.
I got it up over here.
Huh? You got it up?
I got it up.
So that's why we went to Tax Watch. So you can see per ratio spending per county. So you see Pinellas at eight, this is for public safety expenditures. Um, Hillsborough, Polk does very well at forty-two, Forty-second. So again, great to Sheriff Judd. Um, Hernando gets fifty-six and we're at fifty-seventh. So you can see even, and Sheriff Nene Highs has a phenomenal job and happy for him up there. And I know he told me the same thing. He's, he's struggling with growth. So even if you look at their number and like, oh, okay, they're only roughly thirty, they're thirty-seven dollars more, but multiply that out by our population. If you, our population, I think theirs is roughly a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand people, ours is what? What do we, what should we go off of today? Six fifty?
Seven or seven.
Seven. So if you look at that number, how much more would be in that, in the, in the ability for public safety? That is huge if we were able to look at that as a ratio. So you all know this one, unincorporated growth. We are leading the way, eight point seven percent. Polk, eight point one, Hillsborough, Hernando and Pinellas. So, and honestly, only soon enough before we pass Pinellas, we're, we're going to be bigger than them soon enough. So to summarize, the surrounding counties, you know, Pasco serves the second largest population in the Tampa Bay region. Our unincorporated Pasco is experiencing the most rapid growth of all surrounding counties.
Annexation is a good thing.
Pasco County has the lowest per capita public safety funding of all the surrounding counties. Pasco County has the lowest starting salary of the surrounding counties. Pasco County has the lowest ratio of law enforcement officers per thousand of the surrounding counties. And with Pasco's continued growth and larger per capita budget funding by surrounding counties, we continue to fall further behind the surrounding counties in regards to our capabilities. So here's, oh, this is bad too, because mine's dark and this is dark. But I know up by the numbers. So roughly it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, uh, calls for service in twenty eighteen. And I can tell you those calls for service have gone up twenty thousand in the past several years. So with the growth and everything, we can see it, twenty thousand, um, calls for service increase. And so the units, that's how many units roughly, you know, it fluctuates how many units on call. I, I'll tell you all this right now. We sent two deputies per call for service. The reason why we sent two deputies per call for service is because when the attacks started on law enforcement, the ambushes, we had to make sure the deputies were safe. Uh, they have families, they have spouses and we do not want to be, um, putting them at any risk. And so it could be a person that has dementia and saying something, we never know going up on that house, does that person have a shotgun waiting for that deputy? So that's why we go two deputies per thousand because it's not worth a law enforcement officer's life. Because, you know, we are, because we're far behind, but at the same time is, I don't want to go to another funeral because we didn't have two deputies going to a call. So, Mr. Waitman, I know this is the part you've been waiting for, MSTU time. So I'll just tell you my thoughts on MSTU and I, and I appreciate if you let me go through, I know I have a couple of slides left. But I'll tell you, this is where I talk about the MSTU. I'm fine theoretically with an MSTU. I'm fine with the philosophy. I'm fine with the fact that, and I, to me, this is, if I'm wearing your shoes and looking forward, is that every constitutional has their own taxing. This is, this is your taxing, this is your taxing. And then we come to you and say, commissioners, um, I need two percent increase. And then you all decide as the governing board to say, yes or no. And so, but we come forward and then you can say, hey, Nacho, this is what Nacho needed, this is what, and this is what, um, you know, sorry, Miles. This is what Mr. Wells needed, I saw you over there. But Mr. Wells is so efficient, he probably will never need anything. So that, that's how I leave, but this is my issue going forward right now, is that there is such a gap. We could not go to our citizens and ask them to fill that gap right now. That would be probably one of the largest tax increases in Pasco's history. So that's where it goes down to priorities, like figuring out in the next year or two or three or four years, how do we stop, how do we fix that gap? And I'm not saying we're going to get up there a hundred percent. I'm realistic. I had, and I'll get in that conversation with Mr. Carbalo had yesterday about being realistic. I get that, but at the same time is, we have to fill the gap before we can talk about an MSTU. So here's a, something I want to bring up about efficiencies and I got two slides, I've got another slide on efficiencies later on, but one here, I just want to show you. So this is about the county detention facility. And I was asked during the transition to hold certifications, law enforcement certifications for corrections officers. And I said, no problem. I said, I will, but are they going to pick up the workload in the jail? Absolutely. They will pick up the workload, that's why you hold their law enforcement certification. I said, okay, great. Between October first of twenty twenty-two and September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, there were two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three calls requiring PSO at the jail. I have no idea why and we've asked, but we get zero response back that is adequate to understand. They keep saying we're short-staffed. But we are sending deputies in for warrant services, drug possession, things that, for things that law enforcement officers are supposed to do, they're not doing. And so I don't know why we're holding certifications for people that aren't using them. But I will tell you, and first, first and foremost, I hope they use them. I have no problem if they want to keep the certification, but at least do your job. It's absolutely absurd, isn't it?
What do you mean?
So, okay, so there's two types of certifications. There's a correction certification and a law enforcement certification. As a correction certification, you can watch inmates, make sure they're safe, do that. As a law enforcement certification, you can serve a warrant, you can arrest somebody for drugs, you can charge somebody with battery. So we gave, or like, we're holding, so the corrections can't hold the law enforcement certification, the sheriff's office can. So I was asked, can you hold their certifications? It actually came from the board member.
Does that mean hold?
Like hold, like it's under our umbrella, like they can't, under their umbrella, they can't have a law enforcement certification. They can only have a correction certification because they're not a law enforcement agency. They're a corrections agency. We're a law enforcement agency. So only law enforcement agencies can hold law enforcement certification. So we are like holding it for them, which means they have to go through certain trainings for us, they have to do certain things to uphold those standards.
Why don't we just have a deputy assigned to the corrections?
Okay, hey, no problem. Will you pay for it? So here's the thing, it's, it's two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three hours, which is equivalent to one of our zones. So when I show you our zones for our population, it's equivalent to a zone, but it's not just going to be one deputy because one deputy only works twelve hours. You have to have shift work, yeah, it's multiple, so, or the jail can just do their job and, and handle those calls for service.
You mean, so have a corrections officer that also has a law enforcement certification?
And there's twenty of them that have it.
Okay, so they could already be doing it now?
They can be doing it now. They can be doing it since October, so October first of twenty twenty-two. So yes, if they would do their job, it would alleviate at least a zone for the Pasco Sheriff's Office. So another thing that you probably often hear about is school threats. Our school threats have risen dramatically, uh, three hundred and forty in twenty twenty-three. So we can't just take it, oh, it's no big deal, it's not an issue. They are all issues, they're all informed. That's somebody's parent, that's somebody's loved one. So, you know, for resources wise, that, that takes a lot of resources. It's just like when somebody goes missing, it's a lot of resources. Overdose deaths. Fentanyl, everybody knows fentanyl is the number one driver, seventy-five percent of deaths. One of the things that Major Crimes has done, our Major Crimes unit, and I give them all my credit, they've actually been working with the state attorney's office. And I give a plug in for, um, Mr. Ross, I know they're trying to get the Axon program. So it's two hundred thousand dollars, but it will absolutely speed up the efficiencies in court system. It is something that is critical. Axon, it's, so basically what would happen is our information from the Pasco Sheriff's Office goes seamlessly right over to the state attorney's office. Without having to deal with paper, without having to do a printer, is anything like that, it is an absolute efficiency. And I, I'm not sure how many FTEs, full-time employees they would have reused, but I don't know that how, that how many to begin with. But it would, yeah, but it would absolutely make things more efficient. But what we do at the state attorney's office is we've actually been charging people with homicides. So we go out there for a overdose, we find out as quickly as possible where they got the drugs, our detectives, everybody starts working a homicide case and we're able to. Our detectives, everybody starts working a homicide case, and we're able to make cases and start arresting people for homicide. Because arresting and charging with possession of narcotics, which we do a lot, is important. But when you charge a drug dealer with homicide, it makes a huge difference. And I know Judge Crane with Drug Court, what he had done there and started and handed it off has been great. But what we need to do is try these drug dealers because the drug dealers are, it's like, it's like the guy selling candy at the candy store. Unless we do something about them, it, it's going to keep falling, falling apart for us. Here's some other numbers. So Trinity, increase, time spent on calls increased twenty percent since twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. So twenty percent more time of deputies being spent down in Trinity. Land O' Lakes, I see an increase, and Wasa Chapel, Land O' Lakes and Wasa Chapel. An increase of thirty-four percent more time going out there. Increase in time spent on calls for services due to increasing calls for service. Our call numbers, as you saw, at twenty thousand, it's going up and you're seeing a growth area. Trinity, Land O' Lakes, Wasa Chapel. And I know somebody can say, well, why don't you just move deputies? And I'll get into that to our call, and I'll show that on our screen. But you can't move deputies because nobody's left Pasco County. They've just come in. So it's not like the other areas where deputies were, the calls have gone down. No, it's just received an increase. This is something staggering. I know for Commissioner Oakley and Commissioner Waitman, this is critical to, to you both. Travel time has increased fifty-four percent. That's our response time out there on District Two. So I'm from forty-one over, trap, think of just traffic alone, getting from one place to another. That's how much our response time has slowed fifty-four percent. So efficiencies, I know Commissioner Stark, this is big for you. You're like, hey, how do we find efficiencies? So our desk officer program, what we, we were able to do is they handled sixteen point two percent of every call for service. So if you're not familiar with a desk officer, they sit at a desk. They're not sworn, they're civilians, which is good because they don't get the high-risk retirement. And so they sit at desk and they type up the notes. Somebody says, hey, I, I think I lost my wall or something happened. I need a driver's license. But to go to Mr. Fasano's office, I have to have a police, I have to have a police report. They type it up and they send it over. The sheriff's office, so we looked at other efficiencies. What can we do? So if we stopped going to a lot of the delayed property crimes, and some we were able to, but to, for all of them, we would only save one full-time, one full-time person. But the amount of negative impact for customer service would be through the roof. And so we said, hey, look, we, just like you, we're all elected by the citizens. We have to make sure that they realize that, hey, we serve them. And if we're not giving good customer service, like our other constitutionals or in the commission, you know, they're going to be upset. So we're going to provide, they pay taxes, and so we're going to give them services. These are our zones. So I apologize, I'm going to get up real quick. Is that, should I carry the mic, Ross? Now I'm good?
No, my's not working.
Oh, oh, carry that other thing. So I'm going to show everybody this real quick. And I, I know the commissioners have seen this, because I remember around twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, I sat with Commissioner Stark and Commissioner Mariano. And so with Commissioner Oakley, when you were coming in office, I was able to sit with you. And then Commissioner Waitman, about a year ago, I was able to sit with you and explain this. So these are our zones. So these are the zones throughout the entire county. This is where people, you know, deputies are assigned zones is where you go. Zulu Four, so that's Gun Highway coming down over, so that's West Gun Highway to the Sun Coast, to US forty-one. Apologize, US forty-one. And Zulu Three, you named it Zulu Three. Used to be a lot of cow patches. Used to be nothing really on the north side of Route. Now we're on the north side of Route. Now we are, our population has boomed over here. Because we have not been able to keep up with the amount of deputies, we can't bring these zones down to make it smaller. So cows don't bother us unless they get loose, which is very rare. But citizens call us. And hey, that's what we do. We respond to calls for service. But because we weren't in the allocation when ten thousand residential units come up and that's going to need forty deputies, we have fallen further and further behind. You know, for the commissioners on the east side of county, that's Yankee Two. Yankee Two goes basically Bell Lake Road, all the way up the county line, forty-one over. That count, that, that zone is unbelievably huge, going from one place to another. Yes, we have shifts, so we have multiple people on shifts. But I'll get into this in a second on another slide. But when you see calls for service going on, so say a kid goes missing down in Yankee Five at the outlet hall. We're converging Yankee units, we're converging Zulu, hopefully bringing some Zulu units over, bringing everybody we can. It's hard to fill those gaps. So that's the issue that we're facing right now. So actually, oh, this is good, I gotta put. So let me show you, this is typical, I, I, I take you not. God is my witness. I looked at the call screen while I'm out there and I said, hey, somebody take a picture of this. Because this shows what goes on. This is not seven, eight o'clock at night, this is two forty in the afternoon on a Wednesday. Where were deputies at? Suicide attempt in progress. Everybody was calling that. Missing adult, Baker Act, child abuse case, stolen tag, suicide, other suicide threats in progress. Things were calling on, sex offense. This was happening. What was also happening was thirty-two calls were holding. Those are thirty-two plus people that were panicked, scared, upset, didn't know what was going on. But we're being told, sorry, we have nobody available because we're tied up on a Wednesday at two forty. This is the reality of what we're dealing with. This is the reality of what we see. And that's why I thank you, you know, please, what is our priorities of county? It should be responding to those thirty-two plus six hundred and fifty thousand residents that when they need us, we can get there. So what do we need? Finally got this, like, Commissioner Oakley had enough. He's like, come out here.
I'm not running to me.
There, there, there. So what do we need? I will always say this, salary has to be the priority. I never want to get back to a point where we lose members to other organizations. Because if we lose members to other organizations, you now fall back to the fact that we have to hire, train, recruit, and build people up. The other part too is, we have members that, you know, inflation impacts them, just like your staff, like everybody. Me may get a pay increase, but the federal government has increased, has created an inflation problem. And so that's through the issue that we're dealing with. The second thing is deputies. We need more deputies to go out and patrol and handle this type of situations. The other one too is, and this is what Mr. Carbala and I were talking about yesterday, and Mr. Murphy, is under Colonel Harrington. I would love to get to a point where, yeah, you know what? I know we're not going to get to Pinellas' numbers. I absolutely understand that. I know we're not going to get to Hillsborough's numbers. I hope to get to Polk's numbers at least. But at the same time is, we have plans in place to say, hey, how do we become more effective without a hundred, you know, four hundred more deputies? Forensics. I would love to be able to just send forensics techs out to delay calls. Because forensics people are heck of a lot better at dusting fingerprints than a deputy. Hands down. So I would love to be able to send forensics out to those delayed calls. Our analysts have become critical to investigations. I, I, the analysts are not high-risk, but I will tell you, they are, without, without them, the detectives cannot be as effective as they are, patrol cannot be effective as they are. I mean, to be able, as a call is coming out, to have an analyst telling the deputy, this is where you're going. Oh, by the way, this person is threatening to kill law enforcement two months ago. Oh, this is what's happening. Hey, we're looking up that missing person now. This is what's going on. They are air traffic control for deputies that are screaming, trying to get to a call because it's a priority. Public safety liaisons. I would like to get to the fact of us hiring eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds that are non-sworn, that can handle the things that deputies shouldn't have to handle. Like, hey, go to this store and go get evidence so that, you know, we can take care of it. Sending a sworn person to a store to pick up evidence is not the most effective use of time. I would love us to be able to get those liaisons to be able to do that, but we can't do that. First, we got to get the money. Then we have to get a ratio that's decent to, to cut those Yankee zones down, to cut those Zulu zones down, then move forward. To gap insurance. I will say that is a morale issue. It's a morale issue, and to me, it's personal too. Because if it's good enough for fire rescue and good enough for corrections, it could be good enough for us. And it wasn't like that money was found. It was, I mean, it was found. It was, as soon as the corrections went over, they had gap insurance. And our members go, whoa, what happened here? Like, why did they get in at us? And so I, I think for the young guys, they have no idea. The young, young women and men, they think retirement is, like, that's la-la land, like that. But for those that have been here and have stuck with this organization, when people left to go to other places for higher salaries, they've earned it. And the other one too is a new armored vehicle. I know it's one of those things like, you know, it's crazy. It is crazy, but with everything else we need, but it, it proves a point. The LISA program's going away. Things are falling apart, you know, some of our equipment. If we had a new armored vehicle, right now we have one that's from two, it's thirteen years old. It breaks down. We have to ask Hillsborough for it. We have to ask Hernando for theirs. We have to ask other organizations. We can have multiple targets at the same time that we're going after. We went after a drug dealer, had multiple targets. We go after child porn, we go after people who have multiple things going at the same time. For us to have a vehicle that really works would be very helpful for us. And so I just throw that there because I'm just telling you, these are the safety issues that we deal with and the calls for service. The threats against law enforcement are real. We see it. When people no longer give themselves up and they say, I'm going to blow myself up like we had, that's a real day. This is really, we had a threat, and I'm not going to go into it publicly. We had a threat against a major establishment here in this county. Had it not unraveled the way it did and we were able to, by the grace of God, stop this, it would have been a horrific day in our county. And that's what we trained for, is those worst days with fire rescue. And so that's the presentation. So appreciate your time. Questions, things?
Mr. Wells, anything? Mr. Corley?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Let me see. Okay, I thought we figured out something on the gap insurance, but maybe that was something different that we figured out.
So I'll, I'll have to look into that. Sheriff and I discussed that yesterday. And we, we show it that savings on our side of it, so I, I just, I'll have to go in and see, you know, how the numbers work on the sheriff's side versus ours.
And I, to Mr. Carbala's point, we did, we talked, we brought it up yesterday, and there was a misunderstanding that was going on. But we have emails back and forth. We want to, we would love to have a sit-down meeting with Mr. Carbala and everybody to say, we know how you do it, but that's not what we see, so let's see how you're all doing it.
Was that our HR department working with this HR department?
That, that's already happened, so I'll.
Yeah.
A question for you, and I have never asked this question of any sheriff. Does anyone count for the number of deputies versus civilians? Is there a, an industry standard?
No, so that, that's where, so.
You have six hundred ninety-seven to four hundred and fourteen.
And so we went, we've, we've gone over the years because it's, I don't ever want to diminish, because salaries should not, salaries and retirement benefit numbers should never determine the worth of a person. And so let me just say, the worth of our civilians is astronomical. And we are blessed by them, and I will say, I'll put our analysts up to anybody. But for years, we've recognized that for the amount of detectives we have, if we're able to force multiply the analysts, which are at a cheaper rate, that's why you see some. We've been, we've been adding to civilian ranks because we know adding five sworn is not as effective as adding twenty civilian. And so we would add twenty to analysts, to desk officers, to reduce those calls for service. So that's why we would do all those things because we're trying to become as effective as possible. And so that, that's, it's a force multiplier.
So that's giving them better information when they get to the call, so they can handle that case quicker, I guess.
Yes, sir.
So on the ten additional deputies, I thought that was a little bump on top of the money we were giving you for deputies. So are, are you not, are you only, so are you adding ten deputies a year or are you adding more than ten deputies?
So, so we're looking at the numbers and we'll get you to a hundred percent numbers. We were talking about it earlier. So over the past five years, we think we've added roughly seventy deputies. The ten deputies were two years. So the past two years, you've added, adding ten deputies. We've added ten deputies, so that's forty additional. We've added ten, they've added, you, you've added ten from above and beyond the budget. We added ten from within the budget, and then thirty came from the cop screen. So we think in the past five years, it's been seventy, but those numbers are in, in those ratios.
Okay, so you're adding, if you keep this up, if you keep, with the new money that we give you, besides the ten, you take ten, you're funding ten deputies out there. So we, so at this rate, we're adding twenty a year.
And we would need forty just to keep up with the past six months.
Um, I love that, I'm going to find out about these correction officers. What else? Oh, on FIRST. So do we know, I mean, has that, you know, I always thought this was a great thing that we did when you came to us and asked us to do FIRST. But the revenues from FIRST, we, you know, what are the revenues and how do we, can we use that towards deputies?
So the revenue, the rep, here's the thing, the revenue is not like it's, we're not, I'm trying to think, we're not Amazon. We're not creating this type of revenue. Basically, the revenues are going in. And what we hope to do is just the revenues to pay for the salaries of administration people in there. It's not that we're going to get, you know, we're not making millions of dollars. We're barely, you know, we're barely to the point now where we're breaking even. But the reason why FIRST is so important is because when you don't have that many people, you have to force multiply. And our force multiplication of having deputies go in to learn different, different things has been tremendous. The fact that, you know, Border Patrol Tactical Operation Group, so you're not familiar with Vortax, so you're familiar with Border Patrol.
Yes.
So Border Patrol's top tier one level team comes in to train with us. We have a partnership with Skydio.
But do they pay?
Huh?
Are they paying?
No, because they, we, they're, they're giving us equipment. They'll say, oh, here's some equipment, here's some training. They're giving us training for free. So they're training us for free where it could cost us tens of thousands of dollars for training, but they're training us for free. Skydio, so I'll give you, if you want something for free, Skydio. If you ever come out there, you'll see Skydio gave us a nest for free because we're, we're learning. A nest is where the drone will come in and zone and dock. And then we're learning how to use the, we're learning, we're learning how to utilize that, so that was free. The, the training that we get from organizations coming in there, you know, for FEMA to come in, they don't charge us. We get free slots for training. So people will come in and train, and yes, there are money that we do receive. I mean, it could be five hundred dollars per person, per class, and if the class is ten people, you know, it's five thousand dollars. But, you know, we understand it goes towards salaries to different things, and that's actually a high number, five hundred dollars. But where FIRST is getting its bang for its buck is the fact that we are, Pasco Sheriff's Office is far and beyond where a lot of organizations are because of our technology, our training, our ability. I mean, to have Secret Service come in and train our people on cyber. I mean, we all know these cell phones, being able to learn how to utilize, like, digital evidence is through the roof. That's where, had we not have FIRST in training centers, we would be sending people off to different locations to learn this. And that's, now you're sending them off to heads in beds and other heads in beds. And we're bringing heads in beds here. We have people that are, you know, the last group that came in, we had a group from Sarasota that we were teaching tactics to. They spent the week in US nineteen down in Holiday, and they hate here, they stayed here, and so that's.
I holiday, no offense.
That's, that's where, that's where that person hadn't stayed, so, yeah.
Listen, and you know I always love first, and I brag about it, but just, you know, we, we just have to be transparent on, on the funding and the money, because that's our responsibility.
Oh, no, I get it.
And at the end of the day, we're going to be accountable.
Right.
So, I mean, there's, there's no doubt, and I was looking at my Florida tax bank, my batteries, I'm down here. As I've said in the past, we're a cheap county. I mean, the, the total per capita property tax levies that we have, that we raise here, were forty-second. So, and I, I hear you, I hear you on the residential issue. And I think that this board is really starting to think twice when we're adding density. It's a real conundrum because people can't afford to buy a house because there's, it's a supply and demand thing. So when we have less density, then the price is going to go up. And then none of our deputies and our employees will be able to afford to live here. So it's a really hard balance that we have to find on, on where, where do we, where do we hit that line? But I can tell you, we're, we are, we push back more than any other board ever has on, on a lot of developments.
I bet you'll find, and I'll add to what you're saying, and you're talking about a lot of residents coming to Pasco and building a lot of residential properties. At the same time, we're doing that, we're, we're taking in and doing more and more businesses than we ever have before. And so we're, we're in the process of trying to change that, where people can live here and work. They don't have to travel as much. And that's happening, even though we're taking in a lot of residents, we are getting a lot of businesses coming in, warehouses and banks of this nature. And they're, they're just coming in roads. A lot of that's going to happen on the east side. A lot of commercial, a lot of, a lot of them are going to bring, have the raw taxes into the county that's going to help change this of so much cost that we have with residents.
And as I say, I'm not, I, I grew up in a row home in Philly. I know what it's like to live in a high-density neighborhood, like that, to me, that, I get it. And so that's the thing, anything we can do to sell this county, I'd be more happy to sell for more, more warehouse districts, more IT. We need it, yeah.
And we want a lot of business and a lot of commercial coming in, and then we will have. have, which also will need some affordable housing somewhere, because we don't have places right now that are afford to these workers that would like to work in these markets for them to live.
Well, the, the issue, and a good point, Mr. Commissioner Oakley, is that we have to, it's a federal thing, but we have to raise the salaries for affordable housing, because I can imagine the majority of your workers and the majority of members for us cannot go into affordable housing because the numbers are so slow, however, they're in a conundrum because they can't afford regular housing.
40% of the citizens of Pasco County, 4% of our workers, uh, need affordable housing, and what they, some people call affordable housing right now, in fact, it's not affordable housing. People cannot live in places because they're, it costs too much.
But I know what you're saying, because we're getting ready to break ground soon, I hope, on a, um, a complex out, out of Naco, and it's 60% AMI, and our, our teachers can't afford, they make too much to, to live in there unless they have a couple of kids and no husband. Um, so, um, but, but gosh, they sure would benefit from being able to live there and walk to, be able to get to all the schools out there, so, um, I don't know how those, I don't know who changes those numbers, but that's my committee at Naco, so I will ask those questions.
Maybe housing.
It's HUD, I'm sure, so I'll, I'll ask them if, how often they adjust those and see if you can do something.
Mr. Mariano? Thank you. Sheriff, thank you for the presentation. Um, you know, for years, I think with Commissioner Wells, when you were on, with Commissioner Wells on, you kind of put something together with your previous administrator and kind of like, set it up where we kind of like, gave you the percentage of the growth, we went on, and you had a lot of flexibility to do, and, and I'm glad to see all the innovative stuff that you've done and what you've got coming up. Uh, and we never wanted to keep gap insurance from you, but at the same time, if you think it's applicable to put in there, I mean, I think it's a good thing. I know we worked together very closely a few years back about a three-year plan to get the deputies pay up again. And again, as things have skyrocketed, probably time to take a, take another look at that, so, we're definitely here to work with you, and, you know, we, we are the fastest-growing commercial county in, in the nation as well, as well as like, number three in residential, but number one in commercial. On the, on the calls and the jail, that is something we need to look at, because that was something that we talked about from the get-go, that we wanted to certify them, so we could take those calls. So I'm not sure where the breakdown was.
No, I appreciate it.
We will, we will jump on that. Uh, and I, I like your point about the drug dealers. I'm going to tell you, if we got a drug dealer, they need to be alive, right?
Yeah, just sort of generally speaking, we don't accept, if it's somebody who's just personal, use kind of little tiny bits, that's one thing, but if it's somebody who's a legitimate dealer, they don't come into drug.
Very good. Now, land use, we work on that a bit too. Zoning's tougher because they got certain rights that are in place that have gone, you cancel it down. Land use, we do a lot of flexibility. I would, and I know you've reached out to try to like, get more involved in that part, and we've worked with, I worked with Chase closely and Alex before, uh, to try to get comments from you guys to be put in there. But I don't, I want to, I want you to, I mean, just take a strong stand with that, every step of the way, every one of those land use comes in, we have flexibility. We can, we don't have to take it. And frankly, as we say, affordable housing, so we just went through Live Local. By the way, for the future, with Live Local, we can usually help up there too, to make sure that we have the options so we don't get saddled.
Right.
Prime, prime development, so if you don't want to go, you want to keep the jobs coming in. Um, and I appreciate, I really appreciate your showings about the helicopter situation, because that was...
I know.
I'm sure you got a lot of conversation too, I was going to go on, so I'm glad you brought out to what you're doing, and with the futures, with the drones, I think it's phenomenal. Um, I'll say the MSU. So we looked at that probably 12 years ago, maybe 16 years ago, and what we found, and there was one gentleman in the company, looked at it, it was Beacon Woods, and we were going that way, it looked like the MSU was we set up years ago, but we found that if we put that forward, that was going to fall on the burden of just the county, not the cities. And we want everybody to share, because you do work together, so we need to share that in together, so, just like we talked about parks the other day, that was my objection to taking everything over.
Right.
But as far as working that, I think we do...
It can be a balance.
Right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but again...
That's the only way we're going to get them.
But again, for, for all the stuff that we're doing, um, you know, car washes, door chairs, apartments, we need to kind of shift away from all that, so it's good, and, again, appreciate you coming.
No, I appreciate, and Commissioner Mariano, do, one thing, when those houses, like, when they're coming up and saying, hey, we have this many, it's the only thing I would